One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May you please call the wall? Councilmember Barnwell?
Here.
Falcone?
Horton?
Here.
House?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Williams? Item number one, proclamation declaring April 20th through 22nd, 2007, as national and global youth service days.
Well, thank you. I'm glad you could come. That's good. It calls you away from school, but aren't you a senior? Yeah, that's what I thought. National and Global Youth Service Day has three primary goals, namely to mobilize youth as leaders who would identify and address the needs of the community, to educate the public on contributions of the youth, and to support youth on a lifelong path of service and civic engagement. National Youth Service Day will recognize the millions of youth who will participate nationally and globally in community services such as tutoring, engaging in disaster relief, educating the community, feeding the homeless, registering voters, and many, many more community needs. On a local level, youth throughout Santa Barbara community are working with a variety of agencies and are engaging in community services such as the Shape of Voice Youth newsletter, who volunteer to write and publish articles about the issues affecting youth; City at Peace Youth, who volunteer to work with their peers on conflict resolution solutions and theatrical ways to express those conflicts; the Santa Barbara Youth Council; and Alcohol and Drug Abuse Prevention Youth Coalition, which stand out as a collective voice taking the lead in addressing youth issues and speaking out on issues such as youth violence and teen alcoholism. And lastly, students working with Looking Good Santa Barbara to make sure our community maintains its beauty and other youth projects through organizations such as Police Activities League, Endowment for Youth, Casa de la Raza, Academy of Healing Arts, YMCA, Project Excel, and other youth-involved programs, which during the past year have engaged in community service projects. We couldn't even begin to list them all, so we tried a little bit. This year, several organizations and individuals in the Santa Barbara community are teaming together as a united coalition to address such issues as youth violence, bullying, adult responsibility as it relates to teen alcohol use. So we proclaim the days of April 20th to 22nd as national and global youth service days in Santa Barbara, and we encourage our community to support the activities throughout the year and to support and encourage young people to be involved and to help build a brighter tomorrow. We don't have to tell you two this. So there you go.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Tricia Bartlett, the chairperson of the Youth Council, and on behalf of the Youth Council, we graciously accept this proclamation for National and Global Youth Services Day.
My name is Claudia, and we'd like to thank you guys, obviously, for supporting us in the Youth Council. We're going to have a youth speak-out at San Marcos High School on April 18th. It's a town hall meeting and speak-out on alcoholism. So thank you for supporting us.
Also, in addition to that speak-out, we'll be cosponsoring a speak-out with ADAP on May 14th regarding youth alcoholism and the social host ordinance. And also, wanted to ask if it would be okay if I just make a quick announcement that the Youth Council will be holding interviews for our vacancies that will become available at the end of the year as our seniors graduate. So that will be at our Youth Council meeting on May 7th at 5:15 at City Hall, and there will also be vacancies on our teen center advisory board. We're looking for motivated young people to serve there. So if anyone's interested, just to contact Susan Young at Teen Programs. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, and thanks for all you do.
We are very proud of you.
You've been great. Okay, are there changes to the agenda?
None, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Public comment. I've got several, three, four speakers, but I did want to say two things. Yesterday was quite a day. Governor Schwarzenegger released a statement about the tragic shooting at Virginia Tech, and I just wanted to, he did that right away, and I just wanted to respect that. And, you know, you can't think of the right words to express the shock of something like that, and the outrage we feel when something like that happens. And we just want to say, as the city council, and I will send my regards to the president of Virginia Tech, because it's just, it's a horrible thing, and we know that something like that could happen anywhere. And our hearts and prayers go out to the victims, their family, their friends, everybody who works at Virginia Tech, and we're thinking about them. On Sunday, Santa Barbara lost an activist. Claudia Mattson passed away. She was an active member of the Legal Women Voters and Citizens Planning Association, and she was so well-respected for her advocacy because she always did her homework. And she remembered and honored the past but was willing to move forward in the best way possible. I'm going to miss her advice very, very much, as will many of us. We're going to dedicate this meeting to our local activist, Claudia Mattson, and we will adjourn this meeting in her honor. So, thank you. Two very serious things.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I might, just on that subject, I think this is so appropriate, because you'll hear at the ordinance committee that we are going to send up the MPO. But when I visited her on Friday, she, I just need to tell people the Claudia story. When we had finished, we were visiting there for a little while, and then she turned to me and said, "So, Ia, now tell me all the gossip. What's happening at the city?" So she was dialed in right up until the very last, so she still had her entire wits.
Well, we'll be, yeah, what is the gossip?
I promised her the MPO would be finished, is what I did.
Oh, that's the gossip, okay.
So we accomplished that.
Not that exciting, oh, okay. Thank you. We have four people who would like to speak for the public comments section. Ramon Naronjo, followed by David Homeless. Mr. Naronjo, we have a clock there. You'll see it.
Yes, thank you for letting me speak. I came a little earlier, and I spoke to the other committee. I thought I was speaking in front of this council, but it was my mistake. I was a registered voter here in Santa Barbara. I'm a Vietnam veteran with six years of service and an honorable discharge. I received a notice the other day that I can no longer vote because I do not have a fixed address. I don't, I don't, from what I understand, this is some sort of an ordinance that goes county and then probably state and then federal. But the, some of the members here and the other people that I spoke to, the other council, mentioned that I should leave my personal address and my phone number. Well, I don't have a phone number, but I do have a post office box. But my concern is really not for myself mainly, even though I would like to be able to be re-enfranchised so that I can vote. My concern is that this particular law or ordinance, or whatever it's called, is just wrong. And there are people who have served our country, can't vote. What's up? I don't get it.
Well, the city doesn't have such an ordinance, just to let you know. And there was a court case, there's a court case that said that you should be allowed to vote anyway, even if you don't have an address. Mr. Williams might want to...
Ramona, I've registered voters, I guess professionally, for many years, and what I can tell you is the thing to do is, if you have been purged from the voter lists, which is possible, because they do that to people that they send out postcards to, and if the postcard doesn't come back, they sometimes purge you from the list. And what you need to do is do a new voter registration card, which can be obtained in any DMV or post office, and you fill out line three, and you pretty much say where you hang out, where you sleep, like the corner of so-and-so and so-and-so, or the Cacique Shelter, or other location. And then you also put down the PO box that you have down as a mailing address, and no one should, no one can take away your right to vote. And if you don't have any place to get mail, you can get mail in my office if you want to, okay? Because I, you should, no one should stop you from being able to vote, okay?
That's correct.
What you prescribe, sir, is just what I did. I registered to vote right there at the very building at the register of voters, where I went to register. And what they did was they sent me a form that said that my vehicle registration and my address did not match, so they were going to purge me from the system.
If you could, can you leave me a copy of that, and I'll run interference?
Maybe you two should work, should talk outside of here, because this isn't on our agenda.
Okay.
So you two can talk about it.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Sure. David Homeless, followed by Bob Hanson. And then our last speaker will be Lee Muldiver.
Hi, guys. Basic needs, food, clothing, and shelter. I think we should encourage more churches to come out and feed the homeless. There's some right now that are scared to come out because they've been harassed by the police, told to leave the park, told they had to have a health certificate in the kitchen of wherever they prepare the food. And as of right now, I think Westmont's the only ones that come out in the park, and they come out in Alameda. And everybody knows nobody wants to mess with Westmont. And one other thing, people on the street are starting to get real curious about these committees we're having. They're asking questions, and that's a good thing. That's about it.
Thank you. Bob Hanson, followed by Lee Muldiver.
I have two minutes. Yeah, I guess I was in front of the Casa Esperanza before we walked up to Oprah's house, and I said, "This place is run like a jail." And Michael Foley got really upset about it, and I said, "Well, that was my opinion, but I want to apologize to him. It's not run like a jail, but it's not run like home." And the place is Casa Esperanza, House of Hope. And I was talking to a lady the other day, and she got 86 because she didn't respect some staff person. And I think that's the worst thing we can do, is 86 somebody. I think we need to, and I think it's the Santa Barbara City homeless shelter. That's what I think it is, you know? I don't know if it's subcontracted out or whatever, but that's, I think a lot of people think it is too, that it's our city shelter. And if it is, which I hope it is, that we would all be involved in it, and not 86 someone because of maybe disrespecting a staff person, that there would be other ways of doing something. I said, "Mike Foley, how about, you know, maybe give them an extra chore? Oh, you can't do that. But how about just write down 50 times, you know, 'I'm sorry,' or maybe get those two people together," something. But to 86 a lady for seven days, now she has a friend, she can go there and all. But still, the place needs a little bit of help. We would like to get, like, washers and dryers over there so people can wash their clothes. Mike Foley says it was designed wrong. Are you an architect? Are you a plumber? I said, "No." But the fund for Santa Barbara, would you be willing to help us with some funding? And we could maybe get some plumbers or architects to do something, to some way that we could do that. I mean, that's something that happens at a lot of shelters, and it's a kind of a self-esteem thing to, you know, get your dirty clothes, save them, wash them, and get back on the road again. Even though you might not get back in the mainstream society, you're still trying to take care of yourself and doing something. So we need help there. Also, there needs to be restrooms down in that area. I know the work wall, they've talked about things happening there, drug activity, something else. But still, if there was one down in the lower Milpiss area, it could be at the shelter. You just knock on the door. They feed 200 people a day. You could knock on the door, and they could have used the restroom. Let them in, take them out, you know? But somehow, some way, that needs to be dealt with too. And hepatitis is a rampage right now in our country, and we need to deal with that. Each and every one of you could be future mayors, and I would vote for any one of you. And I thank you very much.
Thank you. Lee Muldiver will be the last speaker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm Lee Muldiver, San Roque resident. I want to thank you for recognizing the life and achievements of Claudia Mattson, whom I was going to say I worked with, but I mostly followed in various battles for close on to 30 years. And it's worth remembering in this room, both for our excellent council and our superior management and staff, that most of the great visionary ideas that defined our community in the 20th century did not come from local government, top-down. They came from visionary community leaders, bottom-up. And when I think about what Santa Barbara is today, and the difference between here and, let's say, Orange and San Diego County, it was people like Bill and Claudia Mattson, Joanna and Herb Miller, Atlee and Mary Clapp, Ina and Herb Breida, who organized the Foot Hill Preservation League in the 1970s with the idea, not only to stop the Royal Gate project, which was almost 500 homes between La Cumbra and 154, but to have the idea that the foothills would be a public trust, that those views would be protected forever. It was Claudia who helped Judy Arias, when she was chair of the Planning Commission, mobilize community support for what used to be called 4140, that size, bulk, and scale and neighborhood compatibility were important criteria for reviewing projects, and got that into the charter. It was Claudia who beat the drum so loud that Dave Davis couldn't ignore it anymore, and convinced the council to pass the original neighborhood preservation ordinance. And some of you actually may not remember that. We tried a couple times in the early 80s to get Claudia to run for city council, because we thought, you know, her brain and leadership were badly needed. And she said, "What I'm doing out in the community and working with the council is as or more important than anything I could do up in the dais." And for 30 years, you know, without fear or favor or seeking any kind of financial reward, she was there for Santa Barbara, and I will miss her. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We all agree up here. I don't think there's anybody that doesn't agree. Thank you. Okay, on to the consent calendar. We have, I'd like to take item number seven off, and you don't have any to read, but go ahead and read item seven.
Item number seven, public hearing schedule, two-year financial plan for fiscal years 2008 and 2009.
Okay, here we have some dates and times, and just when we put them down on the paper, we found out there's something going on on May 7th. Maybe the city administrator could help us.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think some of you received a notice last Friday that you were invited, I think the staff was invited, to go out to visit that cruise ship, and you wouldn't be back until 1:30. If the council wants, we could move that session to 2 o'clock. There was a meeting with Caltrans scheduled at 3 that I think some of you are going to go to, and they've agreed to move that to 4. So it's really up to the council. If that's not that important to you, we can leave the schedule the way it is, so...
Mr. Horton?
My own preference would be to leave the schedule as is. I don't need to go out. I'd rather meet and get it over with, so...
Yeah. I tend to think that too. I just didn't want to talk for everyone. I didn't know if, well, you were dying to go on a cruise ship for lunch. Nope, everybody wants to do the business. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Then can I have a motion for the consent calendar?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Very good. Thank you. And by the way, we will...
Think I could just go out there and swim back?
You want to swim back?
I was planning on going.
I will definitely make sure that they understand that we had this, you know, this meeting's all set up, so thank you. Report from the ordinance committee?
Yes, Madam Mayor. It's nice, so when I came in before, Jim and I went out and had lunch out there. The ordinance committee met today at somewhere between 12 and 12:30. We discussed three items, well, two items. The Neighborhood Preservation Ordinance is finished at the ordinance committee. We have recommended the package to the council, and I believe May 1st may be the date. At any rate, it's coming very soon, and it's still called Neighborhood Preservation Ordinance, as Claudia wished it to remain. The candidate video program is also a package that we sent up to council for council's approval. Basically, it's a free three-minute infomercial that all candidates running for council or mayor will have at their disposal through the Santa Barbara channels, the free TV, the Channel 21. Campaign disclosure ordinance amendments, we did put off until next week, which we'll hear next time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Finance committee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We met today at 1 o'clock, and we discussed what recommendations the finance committee will review prior to council. There's a list of about six of them, including things like the general fund revenue, requests from outside organizations, and things of that nature. We added a few of our own, and we will then take a look at these items before they get to council, hopefully get some of the review done prior to bringing it to the full council.
Okay. Thank you. Item number 10, please.
Item number 10, 40 assets for Santa Barbara Youth Coalition.
Okay. This is very good. Looks like we're all set here.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and council members, it's my pleasure to bring forward today the work of Channel Islands YMCA and a program that has been put together over the last year and a half, the Assets for Santa Barbara Youth Coalition, and the Future Youth Summit that will be held on April 28th. So I'd like to introduce to you Lisa Thomas-Macrum with Channel Islands YMCA, who's been the lead organizer of this group with a number of 38 other different agencies. So I'm sure she's very proud of getting that all together, but there's been a lot that has gone on, and so she's here to let us all know that's what has been accomplished and what we can look forward to in the future. Lisa.
Thank you very much for your time, and thank you, Sarah and Nancy, for providing this opportunity to speak. Do I need to do anything here?
No, it's on. There it is. It's magic.
I'm from Youth Outreach Services from the Channel Islands YMCA, as Sarah had stated. What I do is, and I'm just changing the slide already again, there, is 100% full-time. I'm out in the community doing youth development work. 40 developmental assets and character counts. Through my work this past year and my history with some other work I've done, the value of collaborating with this rich community has really proved to be successful. And we serve all populations that are represented in the public school system, kids on probation and foster children. So that's a quick piece on what we do. The background of the work with the Youth Development, 40 Developmental Assets and Character Counts is that it's been around about 10 years. The lead agency in doing this outreach work in youth development has been the Channel Islands YMCA. It did start, the Assets for Santa Barbara Youth Coalition, around 1994 at DP High School. That was the first high school that adopted the 40 developmental assets, which I'm going to speak primarily today, because that's really what our work revolves around with the Assets for Santa Barbara Youth Coalition, as well as the Youth Summit. Which brings us to the community initiative. There are community initiatives going on all across the nation with the 40 developmental assets as the foundation. And success, as we know, and many of us have done, and we're not reinventing the wheel here, is through collaborating. So we really work towards integrating our area services to optimize outcomes. The 40 developmental assets is backed by significant research. It's from the National Research Institute, called Search Institute. These are simple words, the first bullet, simple words that I would say describe incredibly successful philosophy. It's a philosophy. It's not a program. It's not a framework. It is really a philosophy. They're common, concrete, common sense tools and skills that all youth need to grow into productive, emotionally healthy adults. And that's a simple statement, but what the 40 developmental assets framework does is actually put it into a common language that we can all utilize and work from, especially when we are working together in the 40 assets-based Assets for Santa Barbara Youth Coalition. The primary areas researched are social competencies and academic achievement. And if I had a, if I could circle one of those, I would circle social competencies, because for me, that's where everything stems from. So when youth are feeling a positive sense of self-valued, respected, they flourish. So it's very simple stuff that we all know, but what the 40 developmental assets framework does is really just bring us back to, let's stop and pay attention to the relationships we have with the children we work with. Community initiatives are coming up all across the nation. The Search Institute website is fascinating to look at, and many of you probably are very aware of this framework. It's very popular, and it's been up and coming. You can actually click on a state when you go onto their website, and it'll just pop up all the different initiatives in the state, different communities, and they all look very different, and that's because of the different resources that each community has, the amount of buy-in, the amount of work that people want to do. And basically, it is very simple, but it is the core. They are, through these community initiatives, they're rebuilding the foundation for youth. The Assets for Santa Barbara Youth Coalition, and I know you were given a list of our current members, which has actually grown to three more. Now we have 38 agencies and educators committed to building assets. So really, this coalition is based with the foundation of the 40 developmental assets and building the assets, and integrating our services into a variety of projects. And as I said, it did start at DP High School around 1994 with five agencies, Channel Islands YMCA, Council on Drug and Alcohol Abuse, Santa Barbara County Education Office, Santa Barbara School District, and United Way of Santa Barbara County. The one thing that I think we all experience is sustainability. So that's, I see, as a key role for me, being able to do this job full-time, is trying to be the sustainability person in each agency that does adopt it. The next slide, you do have, from my understanding, the list of all 40 assets. It is divided into eight categories. Simple, I'm just going to pass on that slide. This is very moving to me. I sort of took it from a training I had, and they say, "Cassirian ingera," and it's a traditional greeting among the Maasai tribe in Africa, which, this is how they greet each other, "How are the children?" And this is just great food for thought, because we say, "How are you?" So I just think that's an interesting, just food for thought. They measure how well their villages are doing by how well the children are doing. So again, asset development is simple. It's about building the foundation. It's about building relationships. It begins with building relationships, and it just continues to be about building relationships. And it's about coming back to the table with people that work with youth, teachers, youth workers, social workers, law enforcement parents, to engage them in building relationships. So it's the moments. It's the in-between time, and this is really what they push in the assets model. And it's a philosophy. So this is imbued within the day of a teacher. They have six hours at school, so it's in-between class. And many teachers do this, and many don't, and many are burned out. So I see us advocates for asset development as rechargers, as building bridges, as empowering, and saying, you know, "You really do have the power to make a difference, a life-altering difference for a child by just really looking at them in their eye each day and saying, you know, 'I'm glad you're back. I know you have been in juvenile hall, and I knew it took several steps to get here, and I want you to come after class and talk to me. I'm here for you.'" Just that, because I have a background of, I was a social worker for kids in foster care in Ventura County, and I know that some kids, the only person that is there for them may be a teacher, or after-school worker, or, gosh, the social worker. This is the only support person. So this is really about, it's very simple, it's stuff we all know, but it's about bringing it back to the table and coming together as a community and embracing our youth just through our everyday actions, just through, like, in your neighborhood. We've become so isolated, and so the developmental asset model is very much about, remember, because I remember growing up, and I would pick apples across the street at Mr. Taylor's house. And we just really, we've become high-tech and isolated. So it's about being mindful and intentional. Those are words... high-tech and isolated. So it's about being mindful and intentional. Those are words that Assets model uses, mindful and intentional about your time with youth. And as far as my understanding and my belief is, it's, we're all mentors. If you have any interaction with a youth, teacher, social worker, neighborhood person, you are a mentor. It's not an if question, it's how good of a mentor are you? I love this quote. I took it from a training I went to. It's one of my favorites. So, "Children who are successful have accumulated thousands of moments of key positive exchanges where they feel valued, respected, and known." And again, we all know this. But it's just very nice to have it up there and to be reminded and to remind ourselves. We get very busy. Valued, respected, and known, mindful, and intentional, those are really key words in the developmental asset model. And we get, when I do trainings, I'm certified as a trainer for developmental assets and character counts. We can do one to five hours, but they do a lot of exploring of your own assets and your own mentors. And it really brings things up for educators and social workers and whoever works probation. I've done training for probation, about reminding them. Oh, I remember, the woman across the street used to eat my, and this is me, used to eat my all-natural honey cookies, whereas my family thought they were disgusting. So that meant a lot to me. I would run across the street and I was maybe 12-years-old. And so it's, each of us have those experiences about mentors. And so, that's that slide. And again, simple, simple words, but what do we do about them? Adults who care about them and who make them feel they matter, these are the two main things that young people need. So what we do is we actively, as a community, build relationships in every arena and a safe learning environment. And that leads me to the next slide, which is about bullying. And bullying is such a mild word for what I'd like to encompass. So it's bias, it's racism, it's all of that, a negative, unaccepting, violence-provoking thought processes. This is Abraham Maslow's Hierarchy of Human Needs. And it's just a good visual. Some people are more visual. I like, there's a line across where it says, if our, if kids' safety, physical and emotional safety needs are not met, they will really have a hard time thriving. So that's where I really became interested in this pilot project. And we're in four, Santa Barbara School District schools working on it. We're in the fourth month. It's a once-a-week project. I figure, you know, the best way to develop assets is to actually work on developing assets. Wow, we are raising school climate. So it's primarily student-led. It's designed to be long-term, so it does develop the relationships because asset development is about relationships. And there's more buy-in with long-term relationship building. Kids will listen and buy in when they have a relationship with people. And brought it to the Assets for Santa Barbara Youth Coalition and they adopted that along with the Youth Summit. And it's a collaboration. And it's evaluated through many avenues. And I'm going to speak faster because I think I'm using up my seven minutes. Okay.
You're doing fine.
We have a partnership with UCSB to do surveys. We are going to have the kids do an evaluation. And so that's part of that project. And then, of course, you all know about the Youth Summit. You've got information about it. You've got, hopefully all of you will attend. Madam Mayor is going to be doing a welcome. And it's really youth-oriented. We want to, and this is asset development, embrace them and show them that we're there. And I've asked several community leaders to sit and stay and eat lunch, and you're welcome to do that, so they can dialogue with you about anything. We'll be working in the classrooms ahead of time for particular questions. And this is my last slide. It truly does take a village to raise a child. I think that's where we're at now without completely ignoring the violence that's happened recently, yesterday, and within our own community and all across the world. If we actually all take a stance to actively be mindful and intentional about building relationships, I, the climate will change and the children will thrive healthier. So thank you very much for your time. I do have some, several now that I turn around. Mr. Turnbull, Principal of Santa Barbara High School is here. And Christina, I can't, no, I just can't say, I could say Kolb, Aguirre Kolb. She's the school psychologist at Santa Barbara High School. And then Lupita Martinez is a coalition member and she is, represents the Coalition Against Gun Violence. And all of them are very active in our project, as well as the City Parks and Rec, who's been there from the beginning. It's been about a year we've built this coalition. So if any of them want to speak, they have time or you have questions.
Well, Lisa, if you have, it's on Saturday, it's a week from Saturday.
Yes, it is.
And what time would people come, just in case they, this is the first time they've heard of it. We've been listening, we've been hearing about this for over a year, but they might not know.
And I'm long-winded, so.
No, that's fine. You did a good job. Good job.
It's Saturday, April 28th, at the Santa Barbara Courthouse. Inside will be in the mural room. Court, we've got the courtrooms downstairs to use, as well as just that long hallway. 8:00 is continental breakfast. It starts at 8:30 and it ends at 1:30. And the website, which is gone now, but the website, www.youthoutreachciymc.org, will have the schedule of the day on it if there's community members that would like to go. And we'll also have an ad this Thursday in the Independent, so.
Okay. And I think we added on a session at the end for community leaders to talk about.
We have discussed that and the advisory committee. We're still in flux with that.
Okay. Okay, well, you'll let us know. Because we would like to, a lot of us would like to come for lunch with them and to talk to the kids and so on. But if you'd also like us to stay a little, you just let us know.
Okay.
And talk over some things. Would any of you like to add anything? Mr. Turnbull, you're very quiet.
That's what I do best.
Me too, usually. I'm wearing my Don's green. What's wrong with you?
I had to reach out. You know, I can't be tomorrow.
There you go. Okay, okay. No, we're really glad to know that the high school and Coalition Against Gun Violence, too. We've been active in that. So this is going to be really good, I think. Sarah, did you have something else?
Mayor Bloom and Councilmembers, it really has been a pleasure to get together with these other 38 other youth-serving agencies. Because though our missions individually may be a bit different, together we are really looking at serving and improving the lives of youth and families in the community. And Lisa has been really instrumental in getting this coalition to keep moving along, bringing in new members. And we look forward to perhaps reaching out into the neighborhoods and doing some neighborhood projects because that's, has to go back to families and the care within our community. So we're looking forward to tapping into everyone's ideas and coming forward with some other projects that we can branch out into, you know, right out into our neighborhoods themselves. So we appreciate your, seeing our presentation today, or Lisa's presentation, and your support of these types of ideas and the fostering.
Okay. And I've been saying, I think it's really important to help these parents raise these kids because it's hard out there. And we know it. A lot of us have raised our own kids and we wouldn't want to do it again in this atmosphere. It's just difficult, I know. And yet, this whole village, this whole city of Santa Barbara is behind helping people and trying to get them, you know, help the parents raise these kids. It's really good.
Just a little note on that neighborhood pilot project. We have a working title for it, Neighborhood Connection Project. That is, and the coalition is, the beauty of the coalition is the breadth of its diversity. And we do break off in focus groups, so it is very diverse. There will be a group, a focus group, that's interested in the Youth Summit. There's a focus group that has been helping with the Anti-Bullying Pilot Project. And there is a very large interested group in parent involvement and working with existing efforts. And then the Neighborhood Pilot Project, which we're looking at the West Side and collaborating with Sally Kingston and maybe Officer Gutierrez and whatever else we can find out to build on what's happening. So.
Super. Thanks a lot. Mr. Horton?
Lisa, we have a committee on youth here in our city, and we're only one of about 100 cities in the entire country that have that. And Mayor Bloom and Councilmember Williams and I serve on that committee. There's a couple of things I just wanted to point out. We also have a very active First Five Commission of California in our county in Santa Barbara. And a couple of issues that feed into these Forty Developmental Assets that the First Five is working on is to identify developmental issues with kids at a very early stage. So if there's dyslexia or some other learning problem that we identify and know about it. And the other one is to concentrate on skills such as reading because the findings have been that if, if the kids get to, like, elementary and then junior high and high school and they haven't developed good reading skills, they often get into some other issues. And so these are things that we're trying to work on at an earlier age than what these are devoted to, but they're both equally important. So thanks for what you're doing.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
You know, for those of you that are checking out the presentation for the first time, and if the Forty Developmental Assets just feel, seem a little bit too touchy-feely, I think it's important to look at their details. Because, and, and when these were polled in 318 communities in 33 states, it's very important to note what the results of that was. And when you're analyzing polling, you always look at the small numbers and the big numbers, the outliers in some ways, the significant numbers. And here's some that I think are just really important to remember when we're dealing with kids on an everyday basis. And it may not be something that would be a surprise to us, though I think some of these figures you would be surprised from. There are things that we know we should do, but we need to remind ourselves every day to do them. In this survey, only 29% thought that school provides a caring, encouraging environment. That's, that is, shows we have a lot of work to do. Only 25% felt that young, of young people perceive that adults in the community value youth. Quarter. And only 30% felt that parents and other adults model positive, responsible behavior. That's really sad. So, you know, if we can't even model, you know, personal responsibility or the values that we want them to have, then that means we've got, we've got a lot of work to do in our, in our everyday lives. On the more positive side, still, despite all of that, 74% of them have a positive expectation of their life in the future, which is really amazing after all those low numbers. And so I think we also have cause for some hope as well.
Yeah. Thank you. And thank you so much for bringing it to us. We'll see you a week from Saturday, if not before.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thanks. Anybody else? No. Thanks. Okay, item number 11, please.
Item number 11, Kachuma Conservation Release Board and Kachuma Operation and Maintenance Board Proposed Budgets.
Okay. Mr. Williams, this is yours. Mr. Mack's probably presenting. Yes, go ahead.
Well, you know, as they're setting up, I'll give the introduction, but I will give staff, and also Kate Reese is here, who represents all the member agencies as staff person as well. And if she wants to speak, it would be great to have her. We do this once a year. In the past, before I was your representative to COME CCRB, we only had presentations after the budget was already voted on. So I didn't think that was a really good way to get input from y'all. So I thought we should bring it to you every year. I will note that there's only really two things that I've examined and want to change. The question is whether to change it this year or in the future. One of those is switching COME CCRB operations over to biodiesel. And a second is transitioning much of our expenditures on consultants into a permanent staff. Both of those are sort of, either we could do it all at once or incremental. And those are things that are not in the report to think about. But pretty much everything else is covered by the report and will be covered by Steve and Kate.
Okay. Mr. Mack?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Steve Mack, Water Resources Manager for the City of Santa Barbara. And thank you, Councilmember Williams, for a great intro, stealing many of my words. But Kachuma Conservation Release Board, we call it CCRB. Rarely do we use all four words. Is, is the organization that historically looked after the city's water rights and in recent years has, has become a fishery management, fishery programs agency as well. Because, because of our water, our interest in the Sanas River, we've needed to do fishery projects related to those water rights. And so CCRB has taken that task on. The members are the four South Coast agencies, City of Santa Barbara, Galleta Water District, Montecito Water District, and Carpinteria Valley Water District. And the, all of the projects in this year's budget are done in conjunction with Sanas Improvement District Number One, which is the fifth Kachuma member unit that is on the other side of the, of the hill. But we work on all these projects collaboratively. So when we talk about the CCRB budget, we're really talking about the CCRB and ID Number One budget because we pay for these projects and work on these projects together. Primary activities are Kachuma Project Water Rights, a state board hearing coming up before us, and Sanas River Fishery Management. The budget for this coming year is $2.2 million approximately. Almost $700,000 in staffing, $230,000 on fish management activities, also related to the biological opinion on endangered steelhead trout, $83,000 on technical studies, $100,000 on, for legal work, $40,000 Steelhead Recovery Plan, $145,000 on oak tree restoration, and almost $1 million on habitat enhancement projects. The budget for this year that will be, the proposed budget, is about $800,000 more than last year. And that's because we're doing a lot more, we have a lot more money budgeted toward habitat enhancement projects in this coming year. As Councilmember Williams said, the CCRB budget has to be ratified by this council. And the budget will be approved by, or voted on, considered by the CCRB Board this coming Monday. And then we'll bring it back to the City Council for ratification. But if you have ideas on how the budget should be changed, it's better to change it upfront than after the CCRB Board has voted on it. The revenue for CCRB is largely from member unit funding. We also get about $300,000 of other funds. The Kachuma County, the Santa Barbara County Kachuma Betterment Fund, which comes from property taxes, and the Renewal Fund Trust Fund, which comes from us, but it goes into a fund and then we get it back. Related to the Kachuma Contract Renewal in the mid-'90s and the Warren Act, the state water deliveries that pay into a trust fund. Those are funds that are paid for by us. And then the agencies, the federal government gives it back to us so that we can use it for projects we want. The city's share of all this is around $620,000. And there's money in the budget, we have this budgeted in our current budget, in the proposed budget. That's the end of my presentation on CCRB and happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Yeah, Mr. Horton?
Thanks, Steve. Last year when we took a look at this, I had a couple of questions on the legal part of it. And on page one, on the last paragraph of the page, there's a statement about legal. And then on page three, in the table, it talks about legal. And then the second item is proceeding support. And I was just kind of wondering why, why those weren't under the legal, both combined to make it $150,000 or... And then I looked on page four and I saw that... And then I looked on page four, and I saw that of the 100K budgeted, only 8,000 had been spent, and then of the 50K, or 45K I should say, seven, so it seems like we have these budgets, but there's a delay in expense. Can you help me understand what's going on there?
The main reason, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Horton, the main reason for the delay, I believe, and Kate Reese, General Manager for CCRB and COME, is here to correct me if I'm wrong, but much of this is waiting on the state board to act on the Kachuma Project Water Rights. We have had a long process to have the Kachuma Project Water Rights renewed by the State Water Resources Control Board, started in the year 2000. We've had hearings, an EIR has been prepared, it was released, it was brought back, it's being prepared again. When the EIR is, when the draft EIR is approved, then there will be hearings again, and we anticipate having legal expenses associated with that. We have been anticipating this for the last four years, and it hasn't happened. We anticipated again in this coming year, but we anticipated, a year ago, we thought something would happen this fiscal year. It hasn't happened. We expect something to happen in this coming fiscal year. We've been assured it's going to happen, but it hasn't happened yet, but we think we're getting near the end. But anyways, we have been having this $100,000 legal expense in our budget for the last three or four years, and we're carrying it over. And it doesn't get expended in the, it hasn't been expended.
So the actuals then for '06, '07 are only 15K during this fiscal year, is that correct?
To date, yes. There may be some expenses.
And that's not on this topic, it's on some other topic that they've been spent, or it's on preparation for this topic?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Horton, there are things that happen. Our attorney does do certain things, but we haven't had communications with the state board, things related to that, but we haven't had the hearing that would require full preparation and mobilization of his office to participate in a real hearing, which would be several days up in Sacramento and several days getting ready, and none of that has happened.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Williams?
I might be able to answer one of the associated questions, but the other one I might need Kate for. And the one, I'm not sure the exact ratios is how much, because there's a couple different things that these have gone to, and I think one of, one of that is, we're being sued by a private landowner over an EIR that we did. And maybe you could, maybe you could break that out from how much is allocated for Greg Wilkinson representing us on state board-related matters, and so out of that $150,000, what that is. And the, I think the only thing that's regional water board proceedings this year has been a matter in which the CCRB protested the appointment of a member of the board because he did some analysis previously in his work, and I voted against that, I'll just tell you for the record, but maybe Kate, you could tell me what that?
Thank you, Mayor Bloom, and council members, and Councilmember Williams. I'm Kate Reese, I'm the General Manager for the Kachuma O&M Board and Kachuma Conservation Release Board. Just to go back to the legal question a little bit, first of all, in answer to Councilmember Williams' question or explanation, we have two budgets. One is the Kachuma O&M Board, one is CCRB. The lawsuit that's pending, which is from a local landowner, Nancy Crawford Hall, is against the Kachuma Operation and Maintenance Board. It gets a little confusing because-
Even though it shouldn't be.
Because that particular agency has all five of our member units, they all needed to be involved. So COME was then, took the lead as the lead agency under CEQA to prepare the environmental impact report for all of the fish projects, which normally, we do all the work under CCRB budget, but for this action, it was under the COME budget. So consequently, the legal fees that are in this CCRB budget do not include the legal fees that we have to expend for the lawsuit. That is, over and above, it'll show up in the COME budget. So I wish I could say part of it went to that, but it does not. As Mr. Mack mentioned, the delay for the state water rights hearing has been pushing these legal fees and support services. We have them broken out separately because the legal staff does one set of work. Our long-term biologic consultants and hydrologic consultants, who the state board are using to prepare their revised draft EIR, have also been instrumental in providing review of the documents as they come out. So their expertise will be needed to support the legal staff, it's just a separate line item on the budget. We could certainly lump it all together and say state water board proceedings, and include legal and consultant support, and have it, you know, a larger total under one heading. As Mr. Mack also mentioned, we keep expecting this revised draft EIR. It was supposed to be out some time ago. The attorney for the state water board is going on an extended leave. In fact, I think she's leaving tomorrow, she won't be back until April of '08. And so consequently, she will probably write the draft decision after she gets back, which means the earliest we will see a hearing-
She's pregnant.
Yeah, she's having a baby. So she's going to stay home for a year. But the earliest we can expect to see a draft decision and, or a decision and a final EIR is May of next year, of May of '08, next year. The board then, if they do have a hearing and issue a draft decision at that time, these expenses will fall under this fiscal year, but you know, this has been a moving target for four years, and anybody's guess is, you know, who knows? So it's been very frustrating for us as well. So unfortunately, we do ask for council to support our budgeting, the money, because maybe a miracle will happen, and we might actually get finished with this process this year, for the legal, anyway. The other activities that Greg Wilkinson does for CCRB that's included in the legal is he is our Endangered Species Act Specialist for Attorney. He handles issues having to do with the National Marine Fishery Service, both with our biological opinion that we're working under, and also now, which will move into recovery planning for steelhead. But steelhead issues that need legal review, excuse me, or input, he also handles. So the expenses that we do see to date are for activities pretty much other than the state board process. And hopefully, we at least will get a draft EIR on the street and get the full review and comment on that, which will spend some of your money. So that's for the legal part of it.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, Mr. House?
I just had a sort of a follow-up question to that. So are any of the projects that are being held up by this prolonged process capital projects?
No, the, excuse me, potentially there is. We do have an environmental impact report, it's a joint document with environmental impact statement. The Bureau of Reclamation is the lead agency on the NEPA side. I've been struggling with this thing for about six months, sorry. And we have been able to move forward on individual projects within the scope, within the work that we're doing, using different or additional environmental documents. We have one particular set of projects, actually two or three, on tributaries in the San Andres that we are waiting to finish everything up to be able to move forward on those, but the state board process is not holding those up. The EIR and lawsuit that's pending potentially could hold that up. And so we may see a problem depending on how the judge rules on the EIR eventually. Right now, the COME board has certified the EIR for CEQA adequacy, and all the projects have been approved, except for two projects on Hilton Creek, which the COME board decided not to approve. But the Bureau of Reclamation approved those, and so they can move forward on the federal side if they choose to do that, and they have built one of those. But the state board process itself is not holding up our regular work that we're doing.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Williams?
I could try to clarify that further, too, because I know this is all fairly arcane The state board hearing is actually a process that could require us to do more restoration or fish release projects. And so in some ways, there is an incentive to do some restoration projects ahead of time, you know, so maybe that let us off the hook easier. But the-
The microphone's not on.
But the, just to, but would it be fair to say that of that $150,000, that the lion share of that is in preparation to sue or litigate in some way with the state board if we disagree with their opinion? Is that what it's for?
It'll be a decision. No, I don't think so. The money really is budgeted for, to prepare for the hearing. During the year 2003, when we had, I don't know, 17 witnesses and all this, we spent sort of almost $400,000 on legal fees, you know, just to prepare for the hearing and present it all. But this really is to prepare and put forward and participate in the hearing. Documents have to be written, papers have to be filed, and it really is legal fees to pretty much get us through the final decision part. If there is then a lawsuit on the decision that the state board eventually issues for Kachuma water rights permits, and these are just the Kachuma water rights permits, not downstream, just for Kachuma, then that would more than likely be additional money for litigation. Legal fees are just high, unfortunately.
And I have registered, what I feel I get from y'all a lot with the board, that we have a little bit different of an opinion on steelhead restoration, maybe than some of the other member units, and to try to move some more of those processes forward. However, it is advantageous if we move those forward somewhat apart from whatever mandates we may get from the state board, because then we can get grant money to pay for them. So this is all a very interesting dance. I'd characterize that while we as a council may feel differently than the COME CCRB board may feel on the state hearings, that operationally, we may not want to be doing anything different yet because we want to do restoration activities voluntarily so we can get, so we can get grant money to do it. If we get mandated, we can't get grant money to do it.
Okay. Why does that make sense? Okay. Thank you. No, don't repeat it. Quick question. You said the budget is $800,000 more than it was the year before.
In total, yes. For all, for the agency, in total.
And our share is $619,000. What was our share last year, do you remember? And I should have.
$450,000, something like that.
Okay. But we've allowed for the difference.
And much of that is grant funded, but we will get reimbursed.
Oh, I got it.
So we're going to get it back, we just have to have it upfront.
Okay. Okay. Which we usually do. I just wanted to make sure that the increase wasn't too much, but it is an increase for us. Okay, the COME budget.
COME budget is-
The easy part.
Good.
Is he, I, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, I was laughing earlier, and I apologize, but we go to these meetings and we can't keep it straight some of the time as to, you know, which agency's supposed to be talking about this stuff.
I know.
And we talked about forming, combining, reorganizing into one agency or changing the organization. We haven't, to do that, we'd have to have unanimity, we don't have that right now, so we're stuck with the status quo for now. COME is five agencies, it's the same as CCRB with the addition of Improvement District Number One. Its main activities are coordinate with USBR over our contract, and our contract rights and making payments to USBR for repaying for the Kachuma project. And it, COME operates and maintains the South Coast facilities. Budget is about $4.2 million. Much of that is, well, it's operation and maintenance and special projects, and another $100,000 for legal. The city's share is $1.5 million. And this is a major part of our cost of Kachuma water. But both these agencies are a major part of our cost of our Kachuma water. The South Coast conduit and the South Coast facilities, well, let me back up a bit, the Kachuma project was built in the mid 1950s. For 40 years, it was totally budgeted and by the Bureau of Reclamation. We took it over, we took over maintenance and paying for maintenance directly with the renewal of the contract in 1996. We took over a 40-some-odd-year facility. There are many old pieces to this project, and they need to be replaced or repaired. And we're also looking at adding a second, we call it the second barrel, to the South Coast conduit to add reliability and capacity, flow capacity into the South Coast. So the budget for COME has risen in recent years, that's because we have to, we have a big infrastructure, very important infrastructure to maintain some of its replacement. With that, I'll answer any questions you might have. The COME budget does not get ratified by council. Councilmember Williams votes on it. It won't come up until June, but it makes sense, since these are interrelated agencies, to talk about them at the same time, and this is basically the joint powers agency work, the combined work of these two agencies that bring us our Kachuma Project water.
Okay. Mr. Horton has a question.
Another question. So we're 30x percent of the total budget, right?
Correct.
And do you have a table that shows where the other part of it comes from?
Oh, the other agencies?
It comes from the other five agencies.
I know. Do you have something that breaks that out?
We do, yes. I don't have it with me today.
Okay, I'd like to see that offline.
Okay, sure.
And I can give you the approximate numbers. Another 38 to 43% comes from the Goleto Water District, and then the difference being, and then about, about half of that comes from Carp, another, about the same amount comes from Montecito Water District, and then another even smaller percentage comes from ID Number One.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Bangle?
Just a question here, since these are all water expenses, they're all within the enterprise fund of the city's water, so the dollar amounts that you're describing, the million here and the million there, I just want to be sure everybody understands that they're coming out of the enterprise fund of the water, not anything to do with the general fund of the city, correct? Yes. And then those costs are, the costs to the city, not necessarily reimbursed, but they're covered through the utility billings for water that everyone receives when they pay for their water, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure we said that out. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Williams, also.
Yeah, it's the rate payers.
In sort of inclusion, I just want to say that, you know, a lot of people don't, they take their water for granted, you know, and we're going to have a small, you know, and this is included and been sent down to council, but a small rate increase that we have every year in water. That's much less compared to other water agencies, by the way, in terms of their rate increases. But it takes a lot of work to make sure that water continues to come. And then we also have the added mission now of also steelhead restoration, which I think is a good mission. I think, next, Mr. Mack, your report was great. With, when we talk about sustainability impact, though, I think we should also be pretty honest that a big dam in the way of an endangered species isn't really a good sustainability thing, but it's there, we're not going to, can't do without it. We need it to continue our, you know, the amount of water that we get every day. What we can do is mitigate that impact as best we can.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I think Ms. Reese had one other thing that she wanted to say. I think Ms. Reese-
Ms. Reese, oh, thank you. Just very briefly, thank you. I just wanted to let you know that what Mr. Mack presented was our budget projection because COME has not yet really reviewed their budget yet, but I did wrangle this out of my admin manager, and it looks like our budget's going to be a little lower than we expected, so it'll be about 3.7 instead of 4.4, so your share will be a little bit less.
Okay. That's good news.
Make up for CCRB.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks, Mr. House. I was looking for the council here instead of there. Okay, thank you very much. Item number 12.
Item number 12, Memorandum of Understanding for Maintenance of Railroad Corridor Within City Limits.
All right. This is-
This is actually a very good one. I, we have always been wanting to clean up that, and we get complaints once in a while. People get on trains, and then they look at the corridor, and they say, "Oh, my gosh, let's clean it up." So, um-
You did my staff report, you know.
Oh, is that your staff report? Okay, Mr. Allen.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, Browning Allen, the Transportation Manager in the Public Works Department. As the Mayor mentioned, this is a good news story.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we're asking this for the council authorization. He did administer to execute a memorandum of understanding with Union Pacific Railroad and appropriate $24,000 in the Streets Fund for ongoing costs, as well as increasing our revenue estimate for the balance of this fiscal year. We identified the need to have a more formal working relationship with Union Pacific as part of the Neighborhood Improvement Task Force. You know, Streets and RP3s are doing quarterly cleanups on the corridor, but we recognize that we will never get the corridor cleaned up, because as we finish one area, we have to go back and do what we just cleaned up a year or two prior. So, what we have done, and we've identified, working with a small group of city staff from departments in the city, the City Attorney's Office, City Administrator's Office, Parks and Public Works, and the Police Department, and we developed an action plan. And what we decided to do is, we need to get a baseline. We need to clean up the entire corridor. And we realize that we can't do that with current city resources. So, we met with Union Pacific Row on a couple of occasions, and they recognized the need to address problems on their corridor and work with us, and they actually agreed to assist us by providing funding. So, what we plan on doing is do monthly cleanups. Those cleanups will last multiple days, as many as four or five days. We've been in a fight 35 days during the first year of operations. They will reimburse us for our costs. We're gonna hire the California Conservation Corps to do the work. That will be supplemented by supervisor from Streets that will oversee the work. And we might have to bring in a loader to assist with some of the removal of debris. In addition to the monthly cleanups, we're also gonna give you reverse by Union Pacific to do the graffiti abatement that we're currently doing on their right-of-way. And they'll, they'll pay us $200 an hour, which includes reimbursement for staff time, for two people, and our materials and supplies that we use. After the first year, after we get the entire corridor cleaned up, they have agreed to continue with that partnership with us, and we'll do monthly cleanups or cleanups as necessary to maintain what we were able to establish during the first year of operations. And then after a couple of years, we'll sit down with them and evaluate how well the program is working and make modification to it if necessary. Last week, we had Jerry Wilmot from Union Pacific in town. He met with the rail subcommittee. He mentioned this, MLU, and he indicated that Union Pacific would like to use this as a model agreement for other agencies. This is the only city, our city's the only city in the state of California, and maybe in the nation that I'm aware of, that has an agreement with Union Pacific for maintenance. The other one being Oakland, but in the Oakland case, what they do, they notify Union Pacific that there's a problem, go clean it up. In our situation, we recognize there's a problem. They're gonna reimburse us for our costs to actually go in there and clean it up. So, this is a win-win for Union Pacific as well as the city. So, we planning on doing our first cleanup next week. Representative from Union Pacific Maintenance will be in town on Monday to start scoping it out, working with James Russell and the Street Maintenance Staff. And once that cleanup is done, I'll send the council email to let you know how it went.
Okay.
That concludes my report, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Other questions? Ms. Schneider?
Well, it's not a question. I just want to underline what Mr. Allen was just saying about how this is a model program, this is, and this is almost unheard of, to have some sort of arrangement between a municipal government and UP in terms of cleaning up the right-of-way. So, I hope it's one of many agreements we can have with UP on various topics, which is a whole other discussion. But this is certainly a great way to start, and, and it'll really help our graffiti abatement program. And if, I hope other cities across the nation really look to see if they can implement something like this, because it, it's really gonna make a difference as people come in and out of Santa Barbara on the rails and what people just see generally going around downtown. So, so kudos to our staff for, for working with UP, and I do, and last week, we did, we did thank the representatives from UP about their cooperation and how well that's worked out, and they were tru, they were really appreciative of, of, of that comment and, and really expressed that they enjoyed working this out with, with staff. So, hopefully, this is a new beginning.
Mm-hmm. That's good. Ms. Facklony?
Thank you. I really just want to thank you and commend you and all your staff on a Herculean task. Maybe now we're seeing a kinder, gentler UP as we did about, I don't know, four or five years ago, see a kinder, gentler Caltrans come, come down the pike, and we've got some very good working relationships. In fact, the relinquishment of 225, and, and a number of really good things are coming to fruition with the new relationship with Caltrans. And, you know, maybe you're gonna be our secret weapon with UP, who knows, to get us that commuter rail, so that people can more easily get back and forth. But congratulations. Really monumental task achieved. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Barnwell?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I liked the way you put it a while back, Madam Mayor, when you said, "We finally got UP's phone number, and they picked up when we called them." But I think that's great. I also want to thank the staff for doing that, and, and it's gonna make a big difference in the minds of the general public, who really doesn't recognize the difference between city property and railroad property and county property. It's just graffiti, and we need to get it. I had the question, is Georgia and her team gonna be our primary group out there, or do we supplement them with an additional truck and stuff?
For the council for the graffiti abatement, it will be Georgia and her team doing the graffiti abatement, and her costs will be reimbursed, and for the other thing, it will be outside party stuff.
And are we coordinating the CCC program? How, how do we interrelate with that?
We are, we will actually hire, make contract with the CCC to come in, and we will pay it, and we'll get reimbursed for the actual-
Okay, so the, their paychecks will come from us, and then we send the bill back to UP, and we don't anticipate too much delay in that process, I hope?
No, none at all. In fact, they're willing, even, in some circumstances, we get going pretty well, a good relationship, they'll give us the money up front.
Great.
So, it's a very good relationship. And I want to, want to add, this was a team effort, a huge team effort, of multiple departments working on this, and it wasn't just Public Works-
Great.
-and Attorney's and Offices, as well as City Minister's Office and Parks and PD.
Well, good work. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Very good. Mr. House?
Well, Mr. Allen, really to be commended, this is the, this is something to build on, and that's sort of the way I sort of feel all of us would like to see it happen. This is not directly related to other stuff that we've been talking about in terms of the use of the corridor, but it's directly related to our pride in the city and how we feel about ourselves. And I, I tend to think of the increasing passenger traffic on the rail line here, and how, to them, the, the rail line and that whole corridor isn't like the, the back of something, it's the front yard of Santa Barbara. It's the way that they, that's their introduction to our town, and the way that they would perceive it. And the same thing's true for the neighbors that are along the, along the way. It's really important that that be maintained and, and be kept spruced up. And the immediacy of our ability to respond as opposed to putting in a request and waiting for a great, great long time is also a key to its potential success. So, I'm really looking forward to this. I, I am really glad we had a chance to share with Mr. Wilmot our appreciation. And I think maybe in return, and maybe we'll discuss this a little later, their, their willingness to continue to come to the table and work with us on the commuter rail and other issues is maybe an extension of, of a hand in, in our direction as well. So, thank you very much for what you've done.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Well, just in case you're gonna continue to talk to them while you're setting this precedent, the, a, a big question that I have, and, you know, I, I'm gonna go down to the LoSan Board meeting next month by Amtrak, if any of you guys wants to come with me. We're gonna try to get the LoSan Board to put in a, or request for the funds to increase the sightings between Ventura and Santa Barbara, so we could have more freight and commuter rail. But a real question is, is, you know, if we bust our butt with our state legislator to go to LoSan and get LoSan to do all this stuff and get these siding projects, what, you know, I have, what kind of understanding do we have from UP to, to be any more easygoing on allowing us to eventually have commuter rail? I mean, how much sightings is enough? You know, how much work are we gonna sink into this as an, as an institution? And are they gonna do anything for us? Is sort of, you know, I think the, the, we need to achieve some kind of understanding with them, and I think you know that the majority of this council has, has, has taken position and supported commuter rail. And maybe just, you know, putting the bug in their ears, you know, you have council members that are gonna work real hard to, to make sightings happen, and that helps them move freight, you know? Are they gonna be any more willing to be nice to us after that?
They got more than a bug in their ear last week, I can tell you that.
I know that.
The Council Subcommittee on Commuter Rail, I think the Councilmember Horton, House, and myself serve on that, and we-
Right.
-talked about every mechanism possible to see what we could do to work with Union Pacific, everything from trying to find better funding, even advocating, helping them get funding for things that have nothing to do with our local rail line in terms of other areas, because that affects our rail line. And they were blunt and honest, I think, are the two adjectives I will use for them, and, but also willing to talk. And I, I won't say they were willing just to say, "Sure, we'll do whatever you'd like by any stretch of the imagination," but I think there are perhaps some avenues we can look at, whether it's changing the timing of some of the Amtrak trains or looking at some other sightings. But they were, you know, they were also saying, "Even if you double-track the entire rail line, we're not sure what that would mean in terms of adding passenger rail." So, they're, you know, so, so, which is what they've always said for many, many, many years, but, but they're talking. So, I think we have to figure out how we can combine both the need for freight and for passenger rail along this rail corridor, not just in our local area, but the entire rail corridor, although, you know, all the way from San Diego, all the way on up through the Bay Area. So, it, it will be, I think Councilmember House called it 15% full class of water, right? Is that one?
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Barnwell?
Yeah. I, I'd like to make a motion, but I'd also like to remind everybody of that word in our, in our lexicon of "I was railroaded." But let's hope that that isn't the modern definition of term.
Second.
What? He made a motion?
I made a motion to approve recommendations A and B.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Horton was right there.
I was listening.
I think Mr. Horton railroaded the motion.
ESP.
No word about railroading in there, Laurie. Okay. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I think this is a great move forward. Thank you for doing it. We'll take a real brief break while people come forward for the appeal. In just about five minutes, we'll take it. Thank you.
...access and have a driveway slope of less than 16 percent. This is another thing that we take into consideration in determining whether or not the location of a building envelope, our development on a site is appropriate. And one of the primary reasons that development on steep slopes is a concern is the visual impact that it may have. This is called out in the general plan, the open space element, and the conservation element. The neighborhood preservation ordinance is one of the tools that the city uses to implement the policies related to hillside development. Given this site's location and topography, it would not be visible from any public viewing areas. And in addition, the new house would be recessed into the hillside to further reduce any potential visibility. There's also a significant amount of vegetation on the property that would screen the new residents. Both the planning commission and ABR found that the project was consistent with the city's policies and was able to make the findings related to development on hillsides. And this slide just gives you a visual representation of the topography in that area. In terms of the grading required to build the proposed residence, there's approximately 500 cubic yards of cut and 1,300 cubic yards of fill that are proposed outside of the building envelope. However, it's important to note that the grading is balanced on-site, meaning that there will be no import or export of soil required for the project. The appellant has also raised concerns with potential erosion, given past erosion problems. This project has been designed to retain all increased runoff resulting from the project, and this would be due to the increase in impermeable areas associated with construction of a new residence. The project would likely result in decreased erosion problems because the drainage calculations took into consideration runoff from the existing residence located at the top of the hill. With implementation of the proposed drainage facilities, runoff for both the 25- and 100-year storm events would be reduced from the existing condition. Also, an erosion control plan has been proposed, and that would be implemented during construction of the residence. The loss of trees is also a concern raised by the appellant. One oak tree is proposed to be removed as part of the project. An arborist has been out to the site and recommended mitigation for the loss of this tree. Additionally, the planning commission conditioned the project to recreate an oak woodland In response, the applicant has incorporated additional oak trees into the proposed landscape plan. Many avocado trees would be removed in order to construct the new residence. This site was previously used as an avocado orchard, so there are a significant number of avocado trees on the property. The loss of the avocado trees was not deemed a significant loss environmentally, and staff believes that the proposed oak plantings will bring the site back to a more natural setting overall. Finally, the appellant has cited the loss of open space as a concern relative to the project. The existing site is very large and has a lot of vegetation, and this does help to maintain a feeling of openness for surrounding residents if they're able to see it. However, the site is not public open space, and given the location of the house and the landscaping proposed, staff does not believe that it will have a significant impact on visual open space. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the city council deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission's approval of the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The appellant now has their turn, and then it's the applicant. See the appellant here? I don't even see Mary first. Oh, yeah, she's back there. Just didn't see you. Okay, thank you.
Could you tell me how much time I have?
It's right there. You'll see on there. I'll start it up and...
You have 30 minutes, but you can save some for response later.
Because I've been accused of misrepresenting, I did make some copies. You probably have some of these. I wonder if these could use...
Sure, Lori, right here.
Oh, right here, sir. These are what I'm going to talk about. This is the petition signed by people in the neighborhood, and this is about the changes. So, and, okay, and this is also some of your information. And I might call you passing those out. You know what?
Oops.
Eleven copies. I'm sorry. Is there...I don't know how many...
For those extras.
How many copies for the city? On the form, it said 11 copies. So how many?
Yes.
So maybe we have an extra one. I apologize. I didn't think of that. Okay. Except for...well, anyway, I'd like to...first, I'd like to thank you for hearing this, and thank you for coming out yesterday and visiting the site. The first item I was going to talk about is the only one that I cannot document on paper. The rest of whatever I say, that's why I've made these copies, to be able to document what I'm saying. Back in the '70s, this was all one lot, and there wasn't...are you showing the pictures? I don't want to show any pictures right now. Is that okay? Can I wait? Yes, sorry. Sorry. Thank you. Back in the '70s, this lot was all one lot, and at the time, they wanted to split it and build houses. And the neighbors got together, and we signed a petition, and we fought it. And the reason then, of course, was the safety factor. But when they downsized the two houses, we agreed, you know, I mean, as much as we could agree, that we wouldn't oppose it. And so our understanding, and this was...I went through records. 1976 is when city council approved it. So those two houses were approved, and they were built. And it was our understanding, the neighbors at the time, that no more houses would be built on this steep slope. Now, I don't have documentation to prove this, but I was told even if I did, it could be overturned. So I just wanted to make that point. Now, if you've all got the form, number one, this is a pre-application review team, and did you get...did you get one? Yeah, a pre-application. Okay, this is the pre-application, and I hope you don't mind me highlighting this, but there are some disparities in this, and this is my way of showing. So if you go to the bottom of this, I put, and this is from the architect, "Please assume that the future home would be approximately 2,000 square feet with a two-car garage." So this is the pre-application form. This is when they started. This is what they said. And then above it, they did have an average slope of 3.75, and I'm going to talk, point out the slope some because the slope keeps changing. If you go to the next page, this is from the planning commission. This is page two. It tells up at the top, "A new residence is proposed," and I'm not sure if I highlighted this all, but this is the very top. "A new residence is proposed on this parcel, and will be approximately 5,843 square feet." Okay, this is the one they're proposing. And then it says, "This parcel contains the existing residence, which is 5,948 feet." So when this was at the planning commission, this is what they said the second residence was, and I think some people did walk up and see it. And at the time, I knew it wasn't 5,948 feet, but I felt they were doing this to say, "Okay, we can build this big house because there's a big house up here." So they'll talk about compatibility, all right? When you go...I'm going to go back and forth a little bit, but when you go back, when you go to the next page, which is what they sent me in the mail, the public notice on page three, it says, "Parcell two contains the existing residence, which is approximately 3,100 feet." So from planning commission, and planning commission, I don't know why they didn't know, maybe they were told wrong. From the planning commission to when you sent the notice out to me, the top property lost half of its square footage, okay? The other thing, on the next page, on page four, this was on your website for council agenda report. On it, at the bottom, it says, "This project includes construction of a new approximately 6,069-square-foot residence." Well, when it was in planning commission, it was 5,948. I did the math down here. It's 126 more feet. So the house keeps getting bigger. Back on...I'd like to go back to page two again, and I'm sorry if I'm going too fast, but on page two, when they talk about the garage space, they want a modification for that so they can build that extra garage. And if you think about it, for guest parking, who parks in the garage when they come to visit you? I go to visit people. People don't park in the garage. We, the neighbors, and I'm not just representing myself, I'm speaking for the neighbors, we don't understand why they need a four-car garage. When I was at planning commission, one of the commissioners said she liked the separate garage because it masked the bulk of the house. And I thought that was kind of an interesting comment. But there are two other houses up there. They have longer driveways, and they don't have a four-car garage. And I think this also shows that it's not compatible with this house that they want to build. The other houses are not compatible. Also, I wanted...and they did put that up here. On page two, they talk about allow grading in excess of 500 cubic yards, and it's actually 2,800 cubic yards of earth that will be moved. This is how much earth is going to be moved, and this is another concern of the neighbors, is how much earth. They say, you know, they say over, if you don't look into this, over 500, but it's 2,800. Now, let me see. Please go to page five. There, I have highlighted, "Development which necessitates grading on hillsides with slope greater than 30 percent should not be permitted." It seems like the slope keeps changing, and I found their geology report, which is on page six, and it says this, and I highlighted that, "The slope at the proposed building envelope ranges from approximately 21 or 12 degrees to maximum of 39 percent." And I averaged that, and that did come out, that did come out to 30 percent. They recently have been saying, and sorry, I can't show where all this is, but it's 29 or whatever they're saying, 29. Their own geology report says it's 30 percent if you average the slope. And if people were there, took the time to walk to the top of that lot, that 39 degrees there, that's like a black diamond run in skiing. I don't know if anybody skis here, but it's a steep slope. It's a steep slope, and you know what a black diamond run is. So, I mean, that's steep on that end. On page...you'll have to forgive me. I'm very, very nervous. I shouldn't be. I'm old, but I still am. I still am. On page seven, and I apologize on some of these, I don't know if they all got distributed. I messed up on some of the pages, so there's a couple that I have missing. But on page seven is the neighborhood preservation ordinance. And this is one of the concerns, and on your website, or on our city website, I didn't print it for you, but it basically says about the hillside district, "To homes and lots with over a 20 percent slope," and it is 50 cubic yards of grading. "The goal is to restructure these lands' use controls to better reflect the preferences and expectations of the community." So on page seven, number one says, "The public health, safety, and welfare." The people that live below this, and they include 1553 Ignacio Valdez, who's a gardener, Mr. Clark, who lives at 1555, he could not be here. He's out of the country. He's concerned about the health, safety, and welfare. Pauline Smith, who was at the site yesterday, and I don't know if she's going to make it today, and she's lived in the neighborhood for 40 years. She was there yesterday. The people that are directly below this, they are concerned about the public health, safety, and welfare. And I was going to talk about that. If you go to page eight, at the bottom, and this is the city's master environmental assessment, it says, "The MEA also notes that the project area has a high potential for soil creep, contains variable soil conditions, and a portion of the site has high erosion potential." And I looked up soil creep. You probably know this, but it's a geology term, and it means the movement of soil or disintegrated rock down a slope due to gravity, frost, or water. Now, it looks to me like they have tried to take care of the water. Anyone that lives in this area knows that when we get a lot of rain, Valeria Street literally becomes a river. It really does. It becomes a river. And the water runs off the hills, and that's why we've had the city's done all that, you know, the big sewers put in down on the west side around Harding School, because it would flood. It would flood from all the water. People have serious concern when you move 2,800 cubic yards of earth, and I assume it's going to be moved out. It's going to be sitting there. There's going to be this massive house with a garage sitting on this earth, and there's going to be our little houses sitting below this area. With global warming, and I did not bring this up, someone else brought up, with global warming and the change that's happening around the world, and we see things happening lots of places that in the past would have never happened, people are seriously concerned about the massive size of this and the danger. You know, they've taken care of the water, but how can you take care of gravity? How can you take care of gravity on a slope? You know, gravity is gravity. On page nine, this is from their geology report. It says, "As with any development within a seismic-active area, there is always some unpredictable risk of slope instability, differential settlement, seismic impact, or other potential geological hazards that could impact the project." And they do say, "Informations to the recommendations outlined later in this report is meant to reduce the level of risk, although it can totally, or it cannot be totally eliminated." So this is a big issue. I know they talk about slope and the visual aspect, but we're a neighborhood, and we support each other, and we are seriously concerned about what could happen if we had a year of torrential rain, or this is a seismic area. I mean, you know, and I have...I don't know where that is right now, but it is stated. It's stated in here in their information, and we all know that we have earthquakes in Santa Barbara, and it is a seismic area. Lastly, I was going to talk a little bit about the trees, and that's on page 10. And this is from their report. "The project area contains numerous trees and an orchard." And it says, "Identify the trees on the tentative maps specifying the individual species and trunk diameter." And, you know, it says, "Groups of trees may be identified, so forth. Show all trees located within building envelopes that are proposed to be removed." I don't think this was done, and the reason I don't think it was done is there are oak stubs or stumps on this property. In January, when the planning commission went out, and I don't think the planning commission's aware of this, when they went out, previous to that, there was a lot of tree trimming done. And Mr. Manelli's truck, who has a work yard there, it was all loaded up with tree branches and trees. And I didn't give it that much thought myself. I thought, oh, you know, they're cutting down the avocado trees, which they have a right to do. And in January, when I saw the stumps on the property, I thought they were avocado stumps. I thought they were avocado trees, you know, that they had cut down. I went out to the property about a month ago. I didn't go on the property. It's a...Rinaldi has easement, and I looked, and I could see these shoots coming up out of these stumps. And I did take some photographs of them. They are oak shoots. I called Randy Fritz with the street department, very nice man. In fact, he's got me planting trees this Saturday. No, I'm going to be on the west side planting trees. Some good is going to come of this. Anyway, anyway, he told me that they were water sprouts. Well, when the planning commission, when they looked at the property in January, you know, they were all cut down, but when we got rain, they started sprouting. And except for one little spot, what the applicant did again is they cleared the lot. They cut the sprouts off. They, you know, and they raked the grass and everything. And I did have, and I was going to tell you which one it is. I don't know about all pictures, but could I have number eight? Is it possible to have number eight? I was going to show you. I took pictures of the area. Maybe that's it. That's it right there. I think that's one of the bigger ones. Two of the stumps on that property are over six and a half inches. One was five and a half inches, and the rest were four inches or more. I don't have the exact count, but I think there were at least eight oak trees cut down. They...I asked Randy about it, and he says, "Well, you've got to count the rings on them to see how old they are." But oak trees are slow growing. I can't believe those oak trees weren't there for a while. Originally, Dan Condon did come in 2003. He looked at the property, and I'm thinking, maybe...I, in my mind, because I'm trusting of people, and I know he was a good arborist, I'm thinking, maybe the avocado trees were hanging down, and you couldn't see the oak trees, because he doesn't mention, he doesn't mention the oak trees at all. All he mentioned was the one oak tree that's slated to be cut down. Otherwise, he said, they were all avocado trees. So it is a mystery to me how this happened, and it makes me really sad that they were all cut down. But obviously, the applicant wanted to make the property look like there were no oak trees, and they did a pretty good job of it. I have, from the...I actually had an arborist come out, another arborist, and that's...I gave you a copy of this to look at it, to give his opinion, because the way it sounded in 2003 is it sounded like the tree should be dead and gone by now. It should have fallen over. And the fact that it's, at least four years later, it's alive, and it even has a beehive in it, was significant to me. And I highlighted a little bit about what he said, and he said on the front page, "It was evident that this tree is biologically in good condition." And then I highlighted down here, "I am not debating Mr. Condon's assessment. However, I have inspected many oak trees with defects that live for generations. Trees have the ability to make antonomically adoptions, excuse me, that compensate for defects." And he says, "That's why we see so many hollowed trees that remain upright for decades." I'd like to see that this tree not be cut down. Maybe it's not possible, but if it is cut down, please save the bees in it. And a little aside on the bees, one of my neighbors that came yesterday to the site gave me this and pointed out, and this was from Sunday's paper, on the Earth Week, A Diary of the Planet, and it's about vanishing bees, and it tells what a shortage of bees we have, and especially in California. So please save the bees, and they're pollinating plants in our neighborhood. I would like to point out, too, that they talked about the little houses, and yes, we have a lot of little houses, and we have density, but we have these nice hills to buffer our density. And this is a working-class neighborhood, and that's why you're not getting more people turning out today. Some people took a later lunch yesterday to be able to come, but because this meeting is so long, this is hard for people that work to get here. And so Rinaldi, who works, who's adjacent neighbor, she works at Harding School, and I think she's going to be here, but I kind of...she sent a letter, but I think she kind of represents how we feel about it, and I'd like to read it, even though you've got a copy. It says, "Dear esteemed council members, we, the neighbors, appreciate your effort to come personally to the proposed building site and allow us to be heard at the council meeting. We know that the planning department would like you to uphold the approval of a 6,000-square-foot building project. Maybe they were too busy to see with their own eyes the site and the surrounding residents, which are not even a third of the size of the proposed project. Aside from the beginning of the application..." Excuse me. "Already from the beginning of the application process, the neighbors have stated their opposition to such a large square-foot project for such a steep, sloping hillside. But did the applicants ever listen to their neighbors' concerns and reduce the proposed square footage? No, they insisted that their dream house require the 6,000 square feet crammed into the hillside. And to add insult to injury to the neighbors, the planning staff permitted the modification to build a garage in excess of 750 square feet. Successful development has to be done in harmony with the environment. This project looks more like a garden of concrete than fitting with the Santa Barbara paradise. We, the neighbors, do pay property taxes, and our concerns should be heard and considered, but we get the impression that the city staff is favoring the applicants. We are asking the council members today to preserve the character of this hillside neighborhood and require a significant reduction in the building size." There have been people that have been involved with this for a long time that have opposed it. She shares the driveway. They asked originally for easement to build this big house, and she said, "No." That's why they're going to build such a big driveway, because she said, "No, I will not give easement for you to build this humongous house." I hope you will hear our concerns about the size and the danger, and consider also the facts that the sizes have changed, things have been misrepresented, and I would prefer nothing be built there, but if we have to have something built there, could we please downsize it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the applicant.
Madam Mayor, city council members, I have a short PowerPoint presentation. If we could bring that up.
Okay, introduce yourself.
My name is Justin Van Mullum. I'm with On Design Architects. I'm the project planner. I represent Mr. and Mrs. Manelli and the property owner, Mrs. Haldeman. Next slide. I want to start off by just talking about the history that this project has gone through. We started this project in 1999. We've had five ABR hearings. We've done a couple pre-apps. During that time, our numbers have changed because the areas have changed. The first ABR meeting, the neighbors did come, and it was a noticed hearing. They talked about grading, erosion control, slope, and street traffic. The ABR then decided to do a site visit. We did a story poll for that site visit so they could check out what their concerns were and better evaluate them. After that site visit, we were requested to reduce the upper level, give the house a two-story look from the street, minimize paving and grading. We stepped the house into the hill. We moved the house away from the existing oaks, and by the fourth meeting, we had a project approval unanimous, nine to zero. Our ABR lapsed over time as we got all of our reports needed for our DART application completeness, so we went back to ABR where we had another noticed hearing, and we had another unanimous approval from the ABR board. This aerial shows the existing house, and there was some confusion because we used the survey, and we outlined the survey to give an overall number of habitable and non-habitable. So there are habitable numbers, and there are non-habitable numbers, and so that's probably part of the confusion. The existing...the new house will be located approximately right here, and I wanted to show this because it kind of shows, here's the park area, and here's a strip of land, and then this is the park area, and then some oak trees that are existing. Next slide, please. This slide shows our constraints. We had the gas line here, which is a 16-inch high-pressure gas line, and then one of the constraints that was created during ABR was a 30-foot setback from the driveway, the new driveway, because we're adding in between eight and to 10 feet of paving. We do have an easement on the neighbors' property. It's a 10-foot-wide easement, as they have a 10-foot-wide easement on our property. We have the existing oak trees, and then we have...we wanted to set back a good 65 feet and about 30 feet from the existing property. We also wanted to have a construction staging area, so there would be parking for any vehicles, any construction equipment, and staging for grading. All the grading is balanced. It all happens on-site, and that area will allow us to... happens on-site, and that area will allow us to, uh, stage that balancing. One of the things that was mentioned by the neighbor is that there were some oak trees cut down. I was asked that question on-site, and I, my response was, "There was no oak trees cut down." Well, there were no oak trees that were cut down that were larger than four inches. Now, that's when you're, you measure from four feet, um, above the finished grade. So you could have a six-and-a-half-inch trunk, um, when it's cut at grade. Now, none of the oak trees have been removed that were on the original survey, then, when we started this project, and they have all been marked, and these are, some of them, these are the closest. The one oak tree that is slated to be removed is right in this area. It has a hollow trunk, it has been leaning, it has stress fractures, and the arborist felt that it was probably a good idea to remove it and then replace it with some large trees. Forty, uh, 48-inch box was his recommendation. Next slide, please. This will help kinda show you the history from, uh, the planning commission. Originally, we had an area back here that was for an accessory structure, and then the shape of our building envelope had an unusual shape. The planning commission asked us to, to change that, if you can go to the next slide. And so we removed the accessory structure in the, the back part of the lot. Now there's, from about this point right here, there's 200 feet to the end of the property line, all, all clear, no building envelope, no development. And then, uh, if you can go to the next slide. So we've, then we, we kind of took that dog leg out here, and so we're, we're not proposing any construction in this area here, and no buildings in this area here. Uh, this slide was, uh, something else the planning commission added. Even though we have a hydrant right in that location there, then we are within the distance required by the city, the planning commission asked that we put in a new hydrant for the, uh, existing residents. Next slide, please. This slide just shows our original drainage system went right by this oak tree. The planning commission was concerned with that, if you could go to the next slide. We then moved it away from the oak tree. Go to the next slide. It's a good place to point out, uh, this is all erosion control. The planning commission was concerned, how do we manage erosion control, uh, before our V-ditches were in place. One of the things that the V-ditches will do, will, it will stop the water from moving to the existing neighbors, and it will, um, funnel it into, uh, a dispersion area. So, this is the erosion control plan, and, uh, we've got several different areas for catch basins to stop erosion, and then we've got the, this, the, um, erosion either hay bales or other approved methods on both the top slope and the bottom slope. Next slide, please. One of the other requests was that we extend the sidewalk, and so we've got, we've got a walking path that goes all the way up and, and across, and I think it'll eventually go across to this, uh, visitor parking space that we're creating. So we'll have the four parking spaces here, and then a visitor parking space as well, right in this location. Next slide, please. So here's our building envelope, and our slope is 27.6% in this new building envelope. Next slide. So we've got our floor plans, and one of the requests was that, um, we show the roofs, so you can get a better idea of where the, the top, the upper floor is, in, in relationship to the bottom floor. The upper floor is about 900 square feet, uh, net. The first floor is then, um, 2,381 net, and we've got stepped floors, so there's, I'm sorry, stepped floors, so you can see how we're stepping, and I'll show you that more in the sections, but that takes up a lot of circulation, but it also lessens grading. And then we, in our basement, we have 1,090 square feet of habitable, and 1,022 of non-habitable, which includes the garage and the shop, this area right here. Next slide, please. Here's the section that shows how we're stepping up on that, uh, first floor, this being the basement. That allows us to do less grading in this area here. Next slide. This is just to show where the solar panels are located, and that's just real, um, kinda preliminary. The solar panels might be larger, they might be a different shape, or we're trying to go for about a 7 KW system. Uh, the other thing that happened with the planning commission is that they really struggled with this garage. One of the things that they felt is that it was a good way to break up the mass, to, to step the massing down the slope, and that it acted as a buffer for noise and light pollution. Without the garage, their, their concern was that you would drive in, and that the neighbors off in this area, which is Valerio Street, might receive some of that noise and light pollution from the vehicles. Uh, we also lowered the garage, it had a 10-foot plate, and now it has an 8-foot plate, and it's got the, of course, the pitched roofs, the hip roofs, excuse me. And then, next slide. This is something else that the, uh, planning commission asked for. They wanted to see more trees, so we've, uh, put more trees in this location here, and in this location here. These are oak trees, uh, the large ones here, the 48-inch box, those are two, two of those. We have eight 24-inch box, right along this area, and then five 15-gallon oaks. And then we also planted, or will plant, the nine small screening trees that'll help screen the existing house in this location from view of the driveway. Next slide, please. This is a map that shows kind of the, the neighborhood, and, uh, gives you an idea that the FAR in this location is gonna be much smaller, because our lot is, um, approximately somewhere between, um, eight to 10 times larger than the lots in the, in the neighborhood. Next slide. So here's Valerio Street, and then this is the house that's existing on the hill, and then this is the proposed site, and it just gives you a good reference that, uh, this is consistent with the development that's happened in the rest of the neighborhood, and, uh, it is well-hidden as far as with the trees that are existing in that location. Next slide. So if you walked up the driveway, this is the very top of the proposed house, and this is the existing oak tree, and if you could go to the next slide. So there's that existing oak tree right here. That's, um, from, from the driveway at the sidewalk, this is what you would see, and of course, we're going to enhance this area here with paving, and then put the nine screening trees in this location. But, uh, the house proposed will, virtually will not be seen. Next slide, please. So this is from the new driveway, uh, going to the, the pad itself, and, uh, this is the area where the, the, um, four, uh, less than four and a half, or four-inch oaks at four feet of height were removed, because we were clearing this area so we could put in the story polls for the site visit. Next slide. So once again, this is a reminder of what our constraints were. We've got the gas line, the oak trees, we've got, uh, the setback that we've created, so the, uh, existing neighbors will have breathing room in between, in between the driveway and the new building, and, uh, it gives you an idea. We've also got the, the slope, and this is the, uh, area that is our building envelope of 27.6% slope. Next slide. So here's our color elevations that we showed the, uh, plant, uh, planning commission. We have lowered the, the chimneys considerably at their request, and then, of course, we've lowered this by two feet. But I'm showing this to you, so you can get an idea of what materials we'd like to use. We've got stone that'll help ground the basement to the existing grade, and then we've got darker earth-tone colors for the roof and the body to give the, uh, give it a historic craftsman feel. In conclusion, I'd like to go over some of the public benefits of this project.
Could you speak a little closer to the mic when you turn your head, I can't hear you at all?
In conclusion, I'd like to go over some of the public benefits of the project. The new hydrant for the upper parcels, the shed removal that'll widen the driveway and, uh, remove the blind corner. The, uh, driveway will be widened, so now two cars can go up and down the driveway safely. The grading and drainage systems will help stabilize the slope. The existing, uh, oak trees will be preserved. The, uh, there'll be 14 new oak trees that will create an oak woodlands, and the, um, proposed new driveway will be improved by screening trees. This project was shaped by ABR, unanimous support. It had, um, it was improved by planning commission with unanimous support, and we respectfully request your support for the project. I'd like to now have, um, Tom Oxner come up and speak.
Okay, Mr. Oxner.
He's the, uh, project architect.
Okay.
Madam Mayor and City Council Members, my name's Tom Oxner, project architect. Um, I just have a few comments to make.
Okay.
Couple of points. One, right off the bat, proposed projects on sites that approach 30% go under a lot of scrutiny. This project went under a lot of scrutiny. Um, right off the bat, they're assumed to have all the typical problems that steep slope sites have: visibility from afar, drainage problems, uh, difficulty for vehicular access. This particular site, although it approaches 30%, doesn't necessarily behave like a lot of those sites as it's being compared to. The, um, the, the, the relatively, uh, flat area below it really helps solve a lot of these problems, in the sense of the vegetation which surrounds the site, the ability to get vehicular access to the site without doing a lot of grading at that point. Um, the, um, the ability to deal with the drainage, having that flat area down there allows us to spread the water out and to deal with it and probably handle it in even a better way than, than the problems that are occurring on the site right now. So this project was looked at from day one, having that 30%, it approaches 30%, it could really be a problem, and I think all of the review that it's gone through, and the particulars of the site, and the way that it's been designed, I think is reason why it's, it's, it's gained the support, and it's, uh, and it really, even though it has that 30% mindset, really doesn't behave that way. There's one other point that I'd like to make, and that is the size of the house. The size of the house, yes, it, it has a lot of square footage, but certainly that square footage is, represents a much smaller FAR than the neighborhood. Aside from that point, much of the square footage has been put below grade. Much of the square footage is tucked underneath the existing grade. If you look at the square footage of the main level of the house, and the, the, the enclosed attic, or occupied attic, as I call it, which was a, a requirement of the ABR, or suggestion of the ABR to, to reduce the visible look of the structure, there's approximately 3,200, uh, 3,300 square feet of house that really sits above grade, and that would further, that would, that's down in the neighborhood of the size of homes that, that exist up and down Valerio. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we have the staff, if there's anything to react to. You okay?
Actually, yeah, Mayor Bloom and council members, I did wanna respond to a couple of things. Uh, one of the things that the appellant noted were differences in square footage, and those can occur a little bit over time. The original application was in 1990, in 1999, and they did not actually have a house proposal, they just had an assumption at that point. Um, the proposal for the house came a little later. Um, on the, the slope of the building envelope did change, because the building envelope changed. It was reduced, and some of the steeper areas of the building envelope were removed from the proposal. Uh, the, she notes that in one of the notices that it references that the, the NPO findings required, because the grading exceeds 500 cubic yards outside the building envelope. That's the standard at which we require those findings, so not, not a statement about what the actual grading was. Um, and then, I think, you know, she made, she raises the issue of the fact that this is a high erosion potential area, and it ju, basically what the master environmental assessment says, that if you're in this area, then you need to do some pre-planning for what you're going to develop, to minimize that potential for the erosion to become a real problem. And the applicant has proposed changes that will take care of that. And finally, on the, uh, geology report, uh, the language that she quoted from the geologist is fairly typical geologist language acknowledging that you can only go so far, and of course, what the geologist doesn't say, because he's looking at the development of the property, is that the existing situation will also lead to risk in the case of a severe earthquake, just as it would if there is development. And I think that the building codes required by the state, and that, as modified by the city, provide very real protection in the case of, of earthquakes. And if you have any questions for any of us, we'd be happy to answer them.
Um, just, uh, one of the neighbors talked about this being ag land. Um, this is Zone A2. Is that agricultural zoning?
Uh, it's, it's, you know, A2 is just our larger, we have two A zones, A1 and A2, that are just our larger lot zoning. It is an avocado, it is an aging avocado orchard, um, not terribly commercially viable. We do have policies in the conservation element that talk about continuing to allow for agriculture, but not necessarily preserving it. We don't have prime agricultural soils in most of the city, and, including this area, that's not prime ag. But there are a few people that have managed to eke out a bit of a living from, from my, from small agricultural opportunities, and we don't wanna prohibit those, but at the same time, we, we don't have anything that requires them to remain.
Yeah. Can I ask you two other things, and then we'll let the planning commissioner talk here? Uh, conditions of approval, um, do we have a condition on this one for no further subdivision? We often do that when we're subdividing a big parcel.
Mayor Bloom and council members, no, we don't have that condition. However, the lot sizes that are proposed would prohibit, under the variable density, any further subdivision.
Okay, we, they would need, um, a rezone or something in order to subdivide further, you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. And then permeable surfaces for the, where the cars are gonna be parked, and that sort of thing?
I'll leave that one to Ms. DeBusschere.
Okay, 'cause that has to do with drainage and erosion.
Yes, thank you. Um, Mayor and council members, that is something that was originally looked at, because it's something that we do promote. However, uh, we did receive reports from the geologists recommending that permeable paving not be used for this site, because it can lead to increased erosion and stability problems. So the, um, hard pavement was actually preferred not only for the driveway area, but also for the drainage ditches.
Interesting, okay. And then, uh, when we were up at the site yesterday, the drainage ditches, somebody mentioned that they, they just need to be cleaned out after every rainstorm. I happened to, I almost, I would take a bet on it, and I don't usually bet. I bet nobody will go out there after each rainstorm and clean them all out. But, um, why, yeah. So why is that, I mean, why was that mentioned? Or maybe, maybe I misheard him. Go ahead.
We do have conditions of approval, uh, that do require the owner to maintain the drainage system in working fashion, um, for the life of the project.
That doesn't mean you have to go out every time it rains, normally.
They just have to maintain it adequately, whatever that may entail.
Okay, okay. Thank you, yes.
Madam Mayor, I can answer that question. I was just simply saying a V-
Oh, was you? I forgot who said that.
A V-ditch can be cleaned out, whereas if it's underground, then you get cla, um, the, the pipes clog, and then the system no longer works. Whereas if you have it above ground, if there's a problem, then you can see it, and then you can repair that problem.
Okay, got it. Thank you, thank you. Okay, we have, oh, you have a question? Okay, and then we wanna hear from the White House.
Since you're answering questions, thank you. Can you, um, there, the two pages from the appellant, page two and page-
Can you, the two pages from the appellant, page two and page three, about the neighboring house and the differences in square footage, the Planning Commission agenda shows the existing residence approximately 5,948 square feet, and then the public notice that said it was 3,100 square feet. Can you comment on that? What happened?
Councilmember Schneider, that, as Mr. Van Mullen had mentioned, that was due to the fact that the original square footage was taken off of the survey. So it basically included everything under the roofed areas. When the potential discrepancy was raised at the Planning Commission, I checked the archived plans and did some calculations to get a more accurate figure for the actual square footage of habitable area for that existing residence. So that's the 3,100.
That's the 3,100?
Correct.
And the garage, well, there are two garage areas. So the 1,209 square feet of garage, is that the additional building, or is that the combination?
That is the combination of the two.
Okay. So can you break that up for me? Which way, where does it go where it's part of the main house, and what's the additional structure?
The detached garage is approximately 450 square feet, 440 to 450. And so the garage that is on what's called the basement level of the residence is approximately 750.
750.
Well, no, 1,200, so it'd be 750, 800 something.
Yeah. No, 750.
Yeah, it's 1,209. I have in the report, 1,209 square feet for garages. So I want to know how that's broken up.
Well, 450 minus 450 is 750.
Right.
Numbers don't lie. I just didn't know if the...
It would be 759.
Thank you.
Is that correct? 759? And that's within the main structure?
Which is large for a two-car garage. Okay. And then, but there's also an accessory building. Now I'm getting confused. Accessory building is, can you tell us about that? Because that's in addition to the garage, the two garages.
Madam Mayor, it is called out on the plans as separate accessory space. However, we calculated it as part of the residence square footage.
Oh, okay. So the couple hundred square foot.
Correct. That's the difference between the numbers on the plans and the numbers in your staff report.
Got it. Thank you. Other questions? Because we still have a member of the public, and we have Mr. White, Mr. Williams, and then Ms. Falconi.
Okay. I have three questions. One is, which one is parcel one and parcel two on the map?
Councilmember Williams, parcel one is the parcel closer to West Valerio Street, and parcel two is the one farther a house.
So this doesn't have a slope that exceeds 30%?
Correct.
Okay. And then, the follow-up on the garage question. So there's four parking spaces outside. There's one parking space down the driveway, and then there's 1,209 square feet of garage space.
No.
No.
Councilmember Williams, there's 1,209 square feet of enclosed garage space, which the way that they've designed it would hold approximately four cars.
About four cars.
And then there's additional paved area along the driveway that could work as a parking space for one guest space.
Okay. And then there's the little turnabout in driveway.
Correct.
And then, the last, now, with it being, with the current zoning, the flip side of the mayor's question would be if this project was smaller, because you can build on half a lot, it could be further subdivided if you had a smaller project? Is that true or not?
Mayor Bloom and Councilmember Williams, no, the lot size is what is establishing, the lot size, the zoning establishes the minimum lot size. And because this is on a steeper slope, when you have a slope that's between 20 and 30%, the minimum required lot size for the A2 zone becomes a one acre minimum. So the new parcel being at 1.75 acres can't get to the two acres that would be required for another subdivision.
Okay. That's, oh, and the last one was the ABR. So ABR required them to build a sidewalk to serve three households? It seems kind of strange.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Williams, there are actually two sidewalk portions. One is the public sidewalk that Public Works is requiring along Valerio Street for a very small...
That's normal.
Correct.
But I mean on the private driveway.
Then there's a pedestrian pathway going along the driveway, which is a typical requirement at Planning Commission and ABR to allow an area for pedestrians to safely access a residence. In this case, the Planning Commission did want to see it extend farther than it was originally shown so that it actually connected all the way up to an area that could lead to the front door.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Falconi, and then Mr. White.
Thank you. I was hoping that maybe the Planning Commissioner, Mr. White, when he speaks, could actually speak to one or both of these questions. But the questions are, when you mentioned, Ms. Hubble, the issue of the improvement, the improvements to the downhill neighbors, if you will, that would be achieved through some of the structural changes to the properties from what it exists now, the current condition that it's in now, and the improvement that would be made to their safety in terms of flooding and the potential for mudslide off of what the condition is now, reminds me of, you know, a condition for a mudslide opportunity. And you also mentioned earthquake. I'm wondering if you could elaborate a little bit on how that's going to be achieved, because I don't know that this is going into caissons or anything like that that would stabilize the land. I'm just curious about a little more detail on that. And then the other question is, it was mentioned by Ms. Frisk that the condition of Valerio Street becomes problematic when there is heavy rain. And it seems to me that according to the map, that that has very little to do with this piece of property in its entirety, really, that it would more likely be coming off the back of Ealing's Park, which may be a whole different conversation that we need to have. But maybe I could get some clarity on both of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Falconi. I'm asked, Ms. DeBusschere's bringing up the aerial so we can get a look at it. This property actually goes to the top of the ridge. Most of the, most of Ealing's actually drains toward Los Pecidos Valley. So, there we go. So you can see that the top of the ridge line runs pretty close to the property line. It actually is, it kind of angles off and is actually on the Ealing's Park property. But there's a small, there you go.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. But, so this property really does angle back to Valerio Street and contributes along with a whole lot of other properties, both, on both sides of Valerio, to the drainage issues along Valerio. And part of the issue is the fact that the sites are, the street is steep, the larger lots, even some of the smaller lots are fairly steep in that area. So there is a lot of water that moves down there to the west side. One of the things that this project does include is drainage improvements to better handle the drainage on-site, and it retains that drainage on-site so that it doesn't, so it reduces the contribution to the Valerio Street drainage issues. In terms of the highly erosive soils, I do not believe they're using caissons, but I would have to, no, I'm hearing, I'm seeing a head shake over there. But they are, they are going to be pulling out soil, recompacting it, putting it in, and that's improving the way the soil works on the land, as well as having the drainage improvements, which will also help reduce erosion. The building codes that we use are established based on the type and strength of earthquakes we are likely to have in the area. So the building, the building code does call for that. Also, this is basically, although there are stone foundations and so on and so forth, it's also basically wood frame construction, which is, tends to be flexible enough to handle most earthquake situations.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. White?
From the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. First of all, this is two projects, really. It's the subdivision and then the house. And the house has been, has gone through, obviously, many rounds of review at ABR. And so there's sort of a secondary, at least the way I look at it, the house, of course, has gained a bit of its own momentum, having gotten to some kind of yes at ABR. But the subdivision, first of all, it came to Planning Commission once, and it received a lot of pretty tough criticism. And the applicant was willing to go back and try again and make changes, and took out an accessory structure that was in that far-left area, as I recall, in that open spot there. Is that, am I, is that right? Right? And so, and you heard a variety of the changes. The new hydrant was another suggestion, again, for a bit of give-back here. And then the house itself, the house is big, no question of that. And that was something that I think was one of the pause points by Planning Commission of looking at the project. And then last was the accessory, the garage, that eventually got approval because it does sort of make the thing more of a compound. It does protect the urban line. If you look at all, obviously, the house is on the top of your screen there. Don't look at them. That you have a neighborhood there of small lots and smaller houses. And then this garage does sort of act to shield this project from those units. The oak trees, another piece where I think that this project is giving a real tip of the hat to the oak tree heritage that's there, keeping some of the big ones that are there and adding to that substantially. The avocado orchard looks to me like part of, it's sort of something that was once probably a fine dream for someone and is now probably more of a problem, both drainage-wise and, it just isn't, it doesn't feel like it's a, somebody is really making, trying to make a strong go of that avocado orchard. So the lot split, one issue. And I think we got to a pretty good place of exacting requirements and exacting improvements that make this thing reasonable, that these are big lots now in comparison to what we're seeing next door. Secondly, the house, as Mr. Oxner said, in its favor, a lot of the square footage is underground, so to speak, or at least below grade. And that's the, sort of the, again, the technique used to get to, to make it less, appear less large. Ms. Falconi's questions were about the improvements vis-à-vis the downhill neighbors. I do feel more comfortable with a modern drainage system being administered to this project, as well as to, when you talk about West Valerio, what we see all over areas that were developed 40 or more years ago is inadequate drainage systems throughout the city. And I would wager that if you looked at, going all the way up to the top and just came all the way down, is there infrastructure there to accommodate the drainage by the math and all that? I would wager not. And so this is, and adding into are part of an imperfect drainage system there. But I would feel that this project is going to end up being engineered, at least not aggravating the situation. And then you've mentioned Valerio Street. So as I said, I would wager that your, the engineering staff would come back and say, you know, this has infrastructure that just wasn't built to accommodate all the drainage that happens on this site. But anyway, in sum, I think the Planning Commission was skeptical about the project to begin with, made a lot of strong criticisms that the applicant addressed. And as you saw, of course, they do a very good job of presenting their case and showing what they're, what was and what is or what's proposed. So it got a, it got an approval after some hard work.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have Catherine Pierre.
Sheila.
Did she? Okay. She is, she supports. I don't know who she supports. Probably the house. Or, yeah, instead of the appellant. Oh, well. And we have no other people. Okay. So it's to the council.
Reminder, Madam Mayor, if either the appellant or the applicant haven't used all their time and have something else left to say, that they're allowed to use more time. Not that we necessarily want them to, but...
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Schneider?
I'll start. First off, thank you for, all sides, for the presentation, and the emails ahead of time are always helpful for those listening. I know there are a lot of people not in the room, but received a lot of emails. And I generally don't reply with a lot of detail because I'm still collecting information. I think that's pretty similar for all of us. One thing first, the FAR is keeping, is brought up, the Florida area ratio, and compared to this neighborhood preservation ordinance that's about to be, hopefully, approved very soon after very many meetings. And I just want to make one thing clear when it comes to those standards of how big a house should be on a lot. When it comes to the standards that's being proposed in the updated NPO, it's up to lot sizes of 15,000 square feet, and this is 1.7 something acres. So to say it's, you know, it's a small FAR because it's .08, and it's like, no, I'm sorry, that doesn't fly because the lot size is just so big. So that, I understand what people are saying. It's, you know, people say it's a big house, and then they say it's a small FAR, but we're looking at a gigantic lot size. And that's not, that wasn't where the FAR standards were really coming from. So I just wanted to put that out there upfront. The word, it's not really a word, but the word that comes to my mind is, this is a ginormous house. I mean, it's a, it's a big house on West Valerio Street, and I have to admit, I'm having trouble with that. And the garage, the second unit, and I guess I understand saying, you know, we want a second garage space of 450 square feet to reduce the massing of the look of the bigger house. But then I think, so we're going to reduce the look of massing by adding more building? I mean, it, you know, there's something that doesn't seem right to me about that. And then the, and it's 1,209 square feet of garage space with 759, that's part of the modification here. I mean, that's bigger than my home, and we're looking at, you know, looking at garage space. So I have some trouble with the size of this project. I understand the, I understand the improvements made in the fire hydrant and the sidewalk, and I understand that. But I still think it's pretty big, and we still have to make neighborhood preservation findings and making it compatible to the neighborhood. And it just, it just seems, it just seems too big. And whether, you know, so that's, and maybe it's changing the garage around. I'm not quite sure how that works since the 759 square feet is part of the major house, and then there's 450 square feet as an additional building.
Yeah. Councilmember Schneider, maybe I can help a little bit. One of the things that's a tough thing with this is that you can take, you can take the square footage for the freestanding garage away, and you still have the house there.
That's right.
And without doing a fairly major change to the house itself, because so much of the square footage of the house actually sits, so it's not readily apparent, you know, that it really, that was one of the things that actually the Planning Commission struggled with, was, well, okay, so we take this away, and they still have a little over 750 square feet of garage under the house, in any case. And there isn't much of a way to reduce that without making fairly radical changes to the house itself because of the way the house is designed in terms of sitting into the hill.
Yeah. No, and that's why I'm saying I'm having trouble with what, you know, what's being presented here. So I don't know if there's another solution to that or not, but I'm struggling with that. The, I mean, the other thing that's happening here, it's not just, it's not just us... The, I mean, the other thing that's happening here, it's not just, it's not just, well, as Mr. White said, there's a subdivision issue here that we're, I mean, that's a major, to me, if we're going to subdivide a lot, that is a significant, creating a lot of potential wealth there and looking at, looking at that decision very carefully. If, for example, we've had maybe a year ago now, looking at, do we want to be receiver sites for saving Naples out in Gaviota? And, you know, the challenge for being a receiver site in the city is where would those units be if we're going to take away bluff-top units on, for the Naples project? And if we look downtown, then there's a whole issue about density. Well, one of the other ways to do that is to take a large lot and allow a subdivision in order for one of those sites to be a receiver site for that. And if that was the situation here, I could, I could see better the community benefit of a bigger house in that location because of that benefit on a regional level. But just to do it just because someone wants to build a big house, I, unless there's some other way we can deal with the garage, and maybe that's the way to do it, I have some trouble with this. So, and to go, and to ask about where the findings are, I'm just looking at the MPO findings about the compatibility with the neighborhood and the size, bulk, and scale of it. So the other things I do understand, and the grading, the grading issue, because all the cut and fill are happening on-site, that was, that's significant to me. I think that's appropriate. And I understand putting the building into the hillside is better in terms of the visual impacts and trying to stabilize that hill. Be nice not to lose an oak tree at any time, but I understand the tree replacement's an issue. But I got some problems with the size of the house. Thanks.
Mr. Williams?
Well, all of you know that I hate big houses. In fact, I don't really like houses at all. If I can keep things open space, I just, you know, keep that, I suppose, you'd wonder where we would all live there. But, you know, we are charged to, we do have to look at this within the realm of the law. And there is, there is going to be a development. And it's, it's hard for us to say no to subdivisions for various reasons. It is easier for us to deny modifications. Not, it's hard for me to see holding hostage projects with lot frontage modifications. But I still don't like the scale of the house. And I think that there's especially something that we could do by getting rid of that auxiliary structure. I, you know, that driveway is huge. They have an auxiliary parking space. I'm not sure that they need two garages. And I'm not sure that that's in the interest of the city as a whole for us to start awarding garage-sized modifications to huge homes. If it's in the city's interest to minimize the size, bulk, and scale in a way to make it appropriate with the neighborhood, I think we should, should definitely take a stand on the garage side modifications. I appreciate how much the applicant has tried to make it blend into the hillside. I think that they did a lot of hard work on that. These, you know, and I encourage you to take a look at them if you haven't. The Neighborhood Preservation Ordinance findings are pretty tough, you know, to make if you're really being honest with yourself. The public health, safety, and welfare is protected. The grading and development are appropriate to the site. You'll preserve the trees, that you're consistent with the scenic character of the city and will enhance the appearance of the neighborhood. The development is compatible with the neighborhood, its size, bulk, and scale are appropriate to the site and the neighborhood. And the development will preserve significant public scenic views of and from the hillside. That's hard to make with any building on a beloved hillside in particular. So I appreciate that the applicant has agreed to the oak woodland and has done significant screening. It's right next to Ealing's Park. Probably the most likely public view is people coming through the back entrance of Ealing's Park and seeing it coming over that ridge line. If you can make a healthy oak grove, that would do a lot for it. So I love this neighborhood. I walked up that hill a million times growing up because my best friend lives, lived up there. And if I could stop everything from being built up there, I would, but that's not in the realm of reason. And so I would, I would say that perhaps the best thing to do today is to not make, allow the garage size modification, which means the applicant has to get rid of the auxiliary structure and somehow get rid of nine square feet of internal garage space. But I think that he has talented enough people to figure that one out without too hard, and then to deny the appeal.
Okay. I think most garages are around 500 square feet. Isn't that the, where you don't need a modification up to 500, is it?
It's 750 in, in this, when the lots are over
Yeah, that's 20,000 square feet.
Okay, there you go.
So 750 would be permitted.
Got it.
The internal one is 759.
Yeah.
I think they could figure out the nine square feet. And just as a kind of aside, I think this project shows that Steve Little is right about the need to ensure that ag is viable. Our ag, our avocado groves and reasonable water rates for ag is part of keeping these out of production.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Falcone.
Thank you. Well, having heard a great deal about the viability of avocado groves in the city at the Water Commission, it's a hard road to hoe. And one of the women, I believe it's the woman who lives on Lot Two up the hill, mentioned yesterday that nobody on that hill is watering their avocados at all anymore. So it's just, it's gone beyond the point of being the production of those trees, although I did see some fruit on some of them, but quite frankly, I didn't see a whole lot of fruit on many of them. My first, let me, let me come at this a slightly different way. The whole house, according to the staff report, is 6,069 square feet. That includes 1,200 square feet of, currently, not with what Mr. Williams just suggested, but currently, it includes 1,200 square feet of garage space, which could be workshop, which could be laundry room, which could be a whole lot of stuff, but you calculate it as a garage. So that's 1,200 square feet of non-living space. Then there is, remind me again, I know we just did it, but it's really quite a bit of a haze. How are we going to treat basements in terms of calculations in the new MPO? Could you answer that question for me?
Oh, dear Jen, she just went ew. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Don't remember.
I don't know exactly how that's being calculated.
It's a percentage of, of the actual square footage. It's being calculated as a, as a percentage of, in other words, it's not calculated like normal square feet. Because there's a certain amount below grade, Mr. Vincent just walked in the room who is the attorney
My hero.
Helped to write the MPO. God bless you, Mr. Vincent. Could you just quickly thumbnail?
Assistant City Attorney.
Madam Mayor, members of the councils, to answer Councilmember Falcone's question, the proposal for the MPO regarding basements and cellars is that if they are set into the hillside such that the distance from the ceiling level to grade is less than, is four feet or less, more than 50% around the circumference of the basement or the cellar, it would not be counted into the FAR. Please don't ask me how that applies to this building.
Repeat that one more time.
As clear as mud.
It doesn't apply to this.
No, no, it doesn't because the MPO hasn't been modified by the sport.
Well, no, not that, because
Madam Mayor, if I can, the simple issue, the simple proposition is to give credit to buildings that set square footage into the side of a hillside, yet at the same time avoid some gamesmanship with a proposal that we once were considering, which said if a certain number of walls are set into the hillside, you would get this credit. Well, one of the problems is we'd start seeing octagons or some kind of oddly-shaped basement wall. All of a sudden, they get the credit with a substantial portion of the understory being exposed to the air.
Thank you. I realize it doesn't apply to this project for a whole host of reasons. My point is that we are giving folks an incentive to do some setting in, to, on the Mesa, we just had a three-story project built, not the one that I had to recuse myself from, but on Shoreline Drive itself that didn't come up here, that has a basement, a classic, you know, what we all think of as a basement. And those square, that square footage was not counted at all. My point is, is that we're giving some sort of incentive for folks who do that. And that's the policy, and that's, we've come up with this draconian, or this very strange calculation, which I'm not going to even try to understand, really. But there's a certain percentage of this, of the living space in this house that is below grade, right? And so what is seen from whoever walks up the hill, because I can't imagine who else would even see it, is really a two-story house, for the most part, two and a half-story from the, from the street it would present like that. So I guess, and the staff report says that there's, once you take various things away, you've got 3,100 square foot of single-family residence. That, that doesn't seem to me like the numbers work. Could you clarify that, please?
Councilmember Falcone, that's the existing house at the top of the hill?
Oh, so sorry.
So it doesn't apply to the
Oh, I see, yes, no, okay. My first reaction to this house was, that's a lot of house. That's a big house. In fact, I expressed that to, to the applicant. But walking on the site, that's why site visits are so critical, walking on the site, seeing how it's tucked in, then walking up the hill, Mr. Barnwell, Mr. Williams, and I went up, 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 up the hill, and overlooked the site, saw the peak of the story pole from behind, but just barely see it, really, and looked over the surrounding neighborhood, not so much West Valerio, because these houses that are up on this hill have a, have a different character to them, but they match quite, quite precisely to the things that you can see across the ravine that are sitting on a hill, that are quite exposed, that drips three stories down the hill that everybody can see. The character of this particular lot and the ones above it look more like what's going on across the ravine. So it's not, from that perspective, it didn't seem out of character at all, really. It sort of fit with what else was going on, until you get to the flatlands, if you will, where the configuration of the lots sizes was, is quite different, markedly different. So that meant a great deal to me, actually. I felt a little more comfortable with it. It being set in, the soil and the drainage stability is big because that lot's not in very good shape right now. And if I were a down-slope neighbor, I'd be more concerned about that, quite frankly. But that's me. The sidewalk, I think, is okay because coming up that hill, it's very windy. It's more paving, but I think that's a safety factor override there. I'm not quite sure why the sidewalk can't be permeable, or maybe it is. If not, maybe it should be, I don't know, because fire trucks don't have to drive on that, but...
I think it's because of the erosion issues that were mentioned in the geotechnical report.
So that is still about the erosion issues. The screening of the oaks is really very, very, very important, and I appreciate that very much. I think the applicant has done a good job taking staff and Planning Commission and ABR direction. And given, on balance, all of the things that I feel are beneficial, the little side garage stays, it goes, I think it's quite attractive myself, but it doesn't mean much to me, one way or the other. I don't think it presents like a big monstrous thing that sits way up, that's going to intrude on everybody. So I'm leaning toward denying the appeal and letting it go.
Mr. House?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've mentioned before, we have appeals. One of the, one of the things that I find myself looking at is the process that got the project here, and whether it was whole and complete and done appropriately and properly. And I can't find anything about the process and its path, tortured as it may have been over a long period of time, that indicates that much was overlooked, if anything. I mean, the ABR certainly did their, their job with rigor. And the Planning Commission, in a, at least two-step process, seems to have really earned their pay, so to speak. And so I think that, just on that, on that basis, it makes me first want to appreciate everything that went into it and also appreciate the applicant for being responsive along the way. Speaking more specifically to the issue at hand, I do want to mention and commend and appreciate people for writing to us and coming to speak to us. And we had a number, and people who are on one side or the other wouldn't recognize it necessarily, but there are people who agree and disagree with you. And so we had letters from both sides, you know, encouraging us for the appeal and encouraging us for the project. So, and very close neighbors supporting the project, which I thought was kind of important. Subdividing a large lot like this, the existing lot, doesn't seem to me to be a tremendous hurdle. I mean, it's a legitimate thing for someone to do. It's valid and it's been vetted and seems like they have the right to request it. And in this particular area, it will resolve, I think, an issue that was left unresolved with the larger lot, and that is the end game in terms of intensification of use of this hillside area. The, larger the lot, I think we pretty much agree, the more freedom owners have in terms of coming up with larger homes, and that, that there's some proportionality there. However, some who have been around for a while remember how vehemently I and others have been opposed to the very large, sticking up on the top of a ridge mansion, you know, 8,000 square foot duda with, unfortunately, I'm thinking about a particular project now, so I shouldn't describe it any further. But, you remember, Jen? But you just totally, you know, that kind of thing. Now, there's another side to that coin, and that is that we have been working very, very hard to come up with a valid sensibility in terms of hillside design that does what we call nestle into the hill. And we are very encouraging of projects that put as much as possible below ground and deep into the hill and then present themselves in a one- or two-story presence above that steps back. That's, well, one of the things that I think was really great, and as I look at this project, is that they hid the second story under the roof, that they created a veranda around the exterior. If this design is what continues forward, and I'm hopeful that it could, that veranda is very Californian in its style. It's something we rarely see, except in a token way in other projects. And if you were to count the amount of square foot feet that are below ground, what's above ground is closer to that 3,000 square foot. I think that's sort of where you're going, Ms. Falcone, with that. But it's a 2,300 square feet on the, on the floor that's above grade, where the, where the porch is, and another 900 square feet on the second story. Okay, it's larger than my house, but it's also one that is nicely designed to nest into the hill. The issue of the parking is kind of interesting because this is way up off the street. If they were not to provide adequate parking that far away, I mean, I'm just trying to imagine the situation for guests or visitors who would need to walk a great long way or park in a very unsafe way along the edge of the driveway coming up. So I think this is very responsible. I walked up that driveway during election season, as I recall. That was a long walk. But this, this particular arrangement with the extra accessory, or with the extra garage is something interesting. And I think that this is where it's a little bit counterintuitive. I, and it was raised by Ms. Schneider, the idea of adding additional I, and it was raised by Ms. Snyder, the idea of adding additional development to reduce the overall sense of bulk and scale. And actually, that's what design in architecture really does come down to. In this particular case, it's a good example of that. So, and of course, the palette that they're using in terms of the building materials, again, if, and this is sort of an admonition to ABR, because they will have to see this all the way through. Please, I hope they stay with this natural craftsman style, very organic palette, because it is called for here. Just a couple more points, and I'll stop talking here. The size, bulk and scale issue to me is a visual impact on a neighborhood or an area that we're attempting to address. It's not so much, you know, a situation like this about the literal size of the structure, it's what it does to a neighborhood or an area. In this particular case, I think that they've, they've gotten the scale right. And so, and then I think, oh, and then the last piece is on the findings. And I, I share Mr. Williams' concern about being able to address and thoroughly address each one of the findings, and I have done that. I read this very carefully, and I believe that this project can be found by all of the findings that we have in front of us here to be appropriate. And so I'm, perhaps others want to speak, but I'll just go ahead and move to deny the appeal and to make the findings that are here.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, but I have to say, and I'll call Mr. Horton next, but I have to say, looking at the findings you just brought up, garage size modifications, it talks about, it's necessary to secure an appropriate improvement on the lot. And on this size lot, I just don't understand why you would have to have that third and fourth space, another garage. And my problem is, it goes on to talk about this new parcel doesn't have direct access to on-street parking, therefore additional off-street parking is important. Well, a nice space to park a car is different than a garage, and the garage, the extra garage space is what the modification is for. And that's, that's what I'm having trouble with. I always look at the findings, because they're what is held up in court, and I'm having trouble making that finding. Mr. Horton?
Well, I think this has been quite responsive to the request of the planning commission, more so than many that we've seen. And I particularly like the, the way the house sits into the hillside and really minimizes the bulk and scale of the place. I like the drainage plan. I think it will improve the neighborhood and actually address some of the issues raised by the neighbors, because I think the, the system will be, will be better. I really like the oak grove design, which is represented in the model here. I think it really adds to the neighborhood. I don't think the, the old avocado trees do much for it. I think extra parking up, up that high is probably a good idea because of the steep hill and the distance from the street. I'm sort of ambiguous on whether they need that building. I would be perfectly happy with additional parking up there. If they have any kind of an event, they're going to need more parking than two in a turnaround, it seems like to me. So some additional parking up there, I think, is needed. And if it can be done with less structure, I'm fine with that, or not. And so I would also support denying the appeal.
Okay. Mr. Barnwell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll start backwards on some of those things. Insofar as the discussion about that extra garage, there was some conversation at the planning commission level that the down, can you put up the aerial photograph that shows the subject and some of the subdivision lots along West Valerio? Mr. White referred to it as the compound effect. The actual photograph, do you have that, the aerial? Yeah, right there. And, and you can see that in certain configurations of how the house would be placed on the hill, you would be looking down into the backyards of the houses on Valerio. And one of the discussions that they had was this compound effect, including the structure of the garage, removes that looming component of the new house looking down over into the backyard. I agree with my, with the comments of my colleagues, that I think some kind of parking belongs up on that hill, and I think the garage is a good solution. It does require a modification, but when we make modifications, the reason we have the whole idea of modifications is to address unique projects, unique parcels, unique situations. And I think this is such a thing. I am, I want to go back to a comment I think maybe was made by Mr. House, insofar as size, bulk and scale, we are quite clear in our codes that the size, bulk and scale component that we are concerned about is, is how it addresses the public scape, what does it look like, what does it feel like? And thus, we have encouraged on hillsides to nestle these things into the hill. And this one does not act at all like a 4,500 square foot house. This acts like about a 3,000 square foot house. And as Mr. House so correctly points out, the second floor is almost invisible because it's under the roof. It's, it's, it acts as if it's a warren under roof rather than a full second story. It is, it is consistent, it is remarkable to me. When I look at that lot, I can't think of another example, in my experience, of, of a house that is so well-hidden, from the top, the bottom, the left and the right, you can't see this thing from anywhere. And by putting up that garage, you won't even be able to see it from the backyards of those little houses that are down there. The improvements to the street, the fire hydrant, the improvements to the driveway, the general improvements of the drainage down that arroyo, I think, are all to the public benefit. It is a big house, you know, we all like to come in with a smaller one, but I don't need, think there's any necessity to do that. The, I, I go back to what Mr. House says, and I share it 100% with him. How did we get to this spot? Well, we got to this spot with a unanimous approval by both the Architectural Board of Review and the Planning Commission. Mr. White, who is one of the more rigorous analysis, analysts of hillside properties, as Mr. House knows, whenever there's a hillside property, Benny White is always on it when it comes to water and fire hazards and slopes, et cetera. And he approved this. And he did it not somewhat, I don't want to say that we're doing it casually here, but when the planning commission approves these things, they got them. The plans are all laid out. You know, they're, they're checking this, dotting every i and crossing every t. So for them to have approved it and to not have a packed house of great opposition, and to have visited the site myself and seen those story poles and how well it nestles into the hillside, I support the project. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Williams?
Hold on. Can I get a, on the, on the screen, the floor plan, or the, there's a series, the series of the drawings that shows the whole layout of the, of the project, and I'd like to see that. I have a couple concerns. One of, when I, when I did the site visit, no, with the landscaping.
Back, I think. No?
We've, it's not very clear on these. You get a lot more clear drawings in our report. But first of all, when you, when you see, saw those story poles yesterday, some of the most conspicuous was not the building itself, but was the auxiliary garage. You also see right there, is the approach, the, is the driveway up there, not, not that part, but the additional new driveway. Does anybody have a sense of how big that is?
You mean how wide or how long? Or both?
Yeah, especially just how, how wide it is at its ending points.
We were, we're thinking, you know, it's, it's about, when it gets up to the two garages, probably about 24 by 24, and then the rest of it going back to the main part of the driveway.
So I guess I don't quite understand why 24 by 24 area is not, and a two-car garage and a additional parking spot down below.
On the other side.
Is not enough parking for one single-family home. My point is that if, if, if it is fair to grant, you know, a building of this, at least we shouldn't be encouraging people to build bigger buildings by then awarding them a garage size modification to have even more cars because they wanted to build a bigger building. I mean, that, instead of minimizing development, that's rewarding people for building larger buildings. And, and, I mean, I guess that's the hill that I'm willing to die on. So I, I would offer a substitute motion, which I believe under Robert's Rules of Order need to be voted on before, a substitute motion to deny the appeal and approve the lot frontage modifications, the public street frontage waiver, neighborhood preservation ordinance findings, tentative subdivision map act, map, but not the garage side modifications.
Is there a second?
I can second that for discuss.
Okay. So the difference between the two motions is just, is the garage building?
Right.
Okay. And that's all? Okay. Any discussion about that? I mean, I think, I think we are, I know we are criticized often for giving too many modifications. And to me, this is a modification that doesn't need to happen, whereas on some, some lots, because of their configuration up on the Riviera or whatever, these kind of modifications might have to happen. This one, I don't understand. I really don't. I would think you could have more parking if you didn't have a building there. So if it's just for partygoers or parking, I don't understand it. Okay, so we have a, we don't, no, thank you anyway. We have a motion and a second, without, it's the same as the other motion, except it's without the garage building, essentially. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Oh, no.
Okay, first motion is with the garage. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. Big message, though, four to three. We have, over the past, just so everybody knows, I just look at it, I think we've had six appeals from, from the planning commission, and the last four of them, we have agreed with the planning commission. So those of you who are out there wanting to spend your money on appeals, I hope you take that as a, as some, some kind of message. I'm not sure what exactly, but take that as a message. Okay. We have conference with legal counsel, number 14, and, and that's all.
Item number 14, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation.
And I'd like to adjourn the meeting out of that in memory of civic activist Claudia Mattson. Thank you.